We are live, Mayor.
All right. Okay, welcome, everyone. This is our City Commission briefing session. And typically, from about 6:00 to 7:00, we discuss other boards that we are on or any kind of information we want to update each other about or any kind of calendar items and events that are going on in the community. It's very informal, and it's Tuesday, December 1st, so we're already in December. And with that, I will let Ron go ahead and start the conversation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Are you hearing okay?
I am.
All right, so we've got some of the improvements done to the Commission room, and one of the improvements they said they'd have done for us today would be so you could all hear us better from our mics. So it sounds like that's working, so that's good. More to come. You should have gotten quite a few updates in your mail folder last night. A lot of the PowerPoints were in there. There was earlier today some corrections sent out to some Meadows on some of the memos with some additional action on the downtown item, and then also some revisions on one of the water rates. That sewer rate was typo on the memo. So you should have those. Also, just commenting, yesterday, we had a reasonably good sales tax report. For year-to-date, we're only down 2.39%, which certainly was better than we predicted about seven months ago. The -- so a little bit behind for the year, but again, we'll take that one. That represented primarily September sales. Some upcoming events and meeting. We might have saw in the paper tonight. We did make the decision to move forward with the holiday parade. Felt like we had enough rules in place to move forward with that and working hard to make sure social distance occurs along the route. And then we are planning to do a virtual Mayor's Tree Lighting program. We're going to conduct that. The Mayor, President Myers, and Mayor Beth Kiefer from the Red Basket will actually be in the Commission room, and we'll do a short program there. And then we'll have someone in Aggieville at the Triangle to film and broadcast on, I think via Facebook, live, turning on the tree. So we'll have a little countdown in the room and have a virtual ceremony. And then, and that will be at 6:00 Thursday evening. And then the parade is at 5:30 Friday. Some other things coming up. If we have a joint city-county-county meeting, that would be Thursday, December 17th. That would be the county's turn to host that. There is no intergovernmental luncheon in December. The MRC luncheon was canceled for tomorrow. There is a power lunch sponsored by the Chamber on December 8th that is featuring a virtual presentation from Governor Kelly. I think several of you have already RSVP'd for that. And then we have confirmed our meeting time with our new legislators, our returning legislators, and that's set for Monday, January 4th at 9:00 a.m. And that would be in this room, but could also be virtual. So kind of our hybrid mode. So probably hour and a half. No meal involved, so we can get just right into some of the discussion. Is that going to work for everybody? I wanted -- that was one of the things I wanted to confirm. 9:00 a.m. on Monday, January 4th.
Yeah, it works for me.
It works for me also.
Good. Mark, is that going to work? Okay. All right, very good. Mayor, that's all I had.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Ron. Could you just go around this circle with city staff, and then we can come back to the Commissioners?
Jason doesn't have anything.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dennis Marshstall, Assistant City Manager. Just two things. We will be having the Recovery Task Force on this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. We'll be on Zoom and on the city website. And then the second item I wanted to call to your attention, we put in your mail packet, I believe, last week, information about the request for a Street, 17th Street information. So hopefully, at a future meeting, we can get some direction from the Commission about whether or not you want to schedule that or not going forward. That's it.
Dennis, did you need something from us to see if we want to have a discussion on it tonight? I mean, do you need a confirmation on that?
No, not tonight. We can do it at the work session on the 8th or the 15th meeting. Just wanted you to make sure you knew about the information in your packet, and then you can decide how you want to proceed going forward.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Jared, you're up. Nothing? Okay.
Jared Wassinger, Assistant to the City Manager. We met as a selection committee for our strategic plan, request for qualifications and proposals, yesterday, and moved forward with a recommendation from our committee to select Planning Next. They're a consulting firm out of Columbus, Ohio. Have done, you know, extensive strategic plans for a lot of communities, college towns, including Overland Park, Athens, Georgia, Tuscaloosa, Columbus, Ohio, to name a few. We plan to bring that to you on December 8th during that work session as a discussion item. So I'll prepare a memo, provide the proposal that they submitted. They're also going to be participating virtually, so they'll kind of give a brief presentation that they gave the selection committee about their proposals, and it'll be an opportunity for the Commission to have a dialogue with them and talk about the scope of services that we're going to be negotiating. The plan is to bring that to you all as a discussion item so you can understand the scope of services that they're kind of proposing, and then we're going to negotiate an agreement with them, the city administration, to hopefully bring back with you on the first meeting in January. And that way, we can kick off 2021 running with the strategic plan. So I definitely have a lot more information on the 8th for that discussion item.
Right. Thanks a lot, Jared. Commissioner Astorbrook and myself were part of that selection committee. We had 13 proposals. We narrowed it down to four, finished up the interviews, and I'm looking forward to seeing what Planning Next can offer the City of Manhattan. And it was a good discussion, so I'm looking forward to having them introduce themselves to the rest of the city Commissioners. Aaron, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. I -- this Commissioner Astorbrook. I think we had some pretty high-quality proposals of those 13. It was hard to narrow it down to the four, and the interviews helped, but it still kind of was really close. I think the takeaway for me was that we've had already had some enlightening discussions among the selection committee of what the strategic plan could look like. And moving forward, the other part of this is that, you know, maybe it's a six-month window there to kind of get a lot of this accomplished. So there may be some heavy lifting up front, but most importantly, getting the community engaged in that six-month window is going to be a new task for all of us. And as Commissioners, whatever we can do to get the community alerted to that option for their input.
Yeah, very good. Anything else, Jared?
No. Brenda, anything? Katie? All right. Commissioner Astorbrook.
All right, back to me. I didn't -- I don't really have anything to add. I don't think we -- I, just on a personal level, my family enjoyed the tree lighting. And I think that's the music and the things that you can that are unique in this community, we take for granted, and I just really enjoyed that. It's that time of year.
I don't have anything. Good.
I got nothing.
Oh, well, this is just briefing session. It's not Commissioner comments. So Linda, anything from you?
I just, I wanted to ask Ron. You mentioned just a little bit in your early remarks that the sales tax for September was up 2.39%, right? Tonight's paper says it was up 0.24%. Is that an error?
So the total sales were up.
Okay.
But our city tax collections for sales tax revenue was down. And for the year, year-to-date, about 2.79%.
Okay, 2.79. I heard 2.39. Okay, thanks. So, all right, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that because I was just looking at tonight's paper and couldn't.
Sorry, it was 2.39.
Uh-oh. Okay. I just have to say, in regard to that, that I'm pleasantly surprised that our sales tax is holding for all practical purposes, even if it's down for the, you know, compared to the year. But the fact that it is up, the sales tax receipts are up 0.24% is just amazing to me. And I couldn't be more pleased for our community and the projects that we have scheduled. Other than, the other thing is that I don't I want to see more information about the COVID situation in the community. And I'm not sure everyone takes the newspaper, and of course, you know, then there's Facebook. But there is a state, Riley County records 145 new cases from, they said, Monday morning, and that was just from Friday. And I know they didn't do tests over the four-day holiday, so I'm sure that there are some mixed numbers there. But it's just the fact that the numbers are we're in this fall surge, is what it's being called, and we need to all take precautions. Julie Gibbs predicts that there will be some early vaccine here by Christmas for health workers and I'm not sure who else, but that will be important. And that the USD 383 tomorrow night will decide whether they're going to go to remote teaching for the remainder of the year. And I would just mention that Junction City did that a few days ago. So a number of the communities and school districts are doing that. And then Bramlage Coliseum, Bramlage Coliseum has it will begin, they're going to begin capping the crowd at 15% of capacity. That's inside at the basketball more courts, not the outside with the football. But just to say that this pandemic is continuing, and no efforts to date have stopped it. But I do think the fact that Riley County's numbers are less than a lot of the, like Shawnee County, and quite frankly, it is surging in a lot of the rural, smaller communities, too. And it's hard to get information on them unless you read their papers because it isn't well-reported. But there's a cause for, you know, continued concern and continued vigilance. And so I would just say that. Thanks. We had a Flint Hills Regional Council meeting, and we're continuing to work. Kristi Rodriguez is on the call tonight and for one of the agenda items. But they're having really good success bringing people together. I suppose it has taken a pandemic, but it's a good thing. And I want to be sure to give credit where credit's due. I would say also that Riley, the Riley County Commission when I first came to the Commission, like a year or two later, there was a proposal that went around to all the government units to declare the Native Stone Scenic Byway on Highway 99 north through Alma to K-18, and then west to Manhattan, and then south again to Interstate. And the Riley County Commission at that time couldn't bring themselves to follow through. A meeting got dropped, but the whole issue got dropped. So here we are, a couple of years later, and the Riley County Commission has just approved the designation of the Native Stone Scenic Byway in Riley County. So now there's a, I believe, that completes the loop of all the desired counties to make that something that we can promote for tourism purposes and, you know, how popular cycling, bicycling is. So just, and runs, goodness, 20, 30 miles. I'm amazed. And so it's a good thing to have those, some of these things that have been in the works for a while to have, what, draw to a close and to get on with what we need to do. So that's plenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. So this is going to be a little dated because we haven't had many advisory board meetings during the Thanksgiving break. So just to get people caught up on the intergovernmental meeting, if you were not present or unable to watch it, just a few updates. Sidney Carlin mentioned that they are working on how to handle legislative sessions in person, and I believe several of the committees are already meeting in person in Topeka. But I don't know how they're doing it. They're taking quite a few precautions and setting up technology and also deciding whether to have meetings in person or not. She said the, there is, she's on a committee for corrections, and they're looking at some oversight and how to do that a little bit better. Daniel Garas, I hope I said his name right, from NBAF. He's doing the USDA outreach coordinator for USDA. They do have positions for hire, supervisor positions, and a variety of other positions available to go onto their website and check it out. They're also making themselves available, and I mean they, representatives from NBAF as well as USDA, whether you want to invite them and know more about what's going on in our community related to NBAF, positions available, what is going on, what is the timeline, what is the cost, whatever it is. They've so far presented, had 13 events. From the Riley County Commission, Marvin Commissioner Rodriguez mentioned that they had signed on to several of the CARES Act funds for businesses, and of course, Shop Local, the proclamation. We want everybody to shop local. It was Shop Local Business Saturday, but hopefully, you shop local every day. I tried to space mine out, just a 10, you know, one or two stores here and there. But this is the time where we're very comfortable ordering online, so a lot of them also have online services as well as curbside services. So I highly encourage everybody to do that. Linda already mentioned that USD 383 is still having those conversations about whether to stay in hybrid. Their goal, of course, is to do the get-back-in-to-person, five-day in-person. Staffing is the problem, not so much the students, but staffing. Teachers and paraprofessionals, bus drivers, food service employees have to take a lot of precautions for COVID, and several of them. And they get COVID, they have to quarantine as well as their families or the students that are involved in some of those areas. I believe Junction City is also having a Christmas parade. They're not having their hometown Christmas, but I believe their parade is still on. I'm also part of a community meeting with K-State and some of their leadership. We had a meeting yesterday, just briefly. They said 300 students are back in the residence halls because most of them have left for Thanksgiving, and all of their instruction is now online. So several students still have apartments and leases, so they also come back into Manhattan. So even though their classes are online instruction, there's a lot of students still in our community, and campus is still open. There was talk about vaccine. They are looking, trying to work, Linda Cook and staff at Kansas State University are trying to look at any kind of refrigerator models or any kind of freezers or anything like that. They're working on getting access to those on campus if they have to put some of these vaccines in some type of temperature-controlled areas. So all of the other indicators were already mentioned about COVID. Let's see. And I think that's about it. Yeah, and Jared already mentioned about the strategic planning and the consultants. So, yeah, we're looking forward to seeing Governor Kelly this week with the Chamber meeting, and looking forward to that discussion. So other than that, I don't have any more updates.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Astorbrook. I just wanted to bring the Commission's attention. I'm not prepared to answer any questions about it, but the Connect 2040 MPO has on the agenda to adopt their Connect 2040 plan. It's worth, that meeting's tomorrow. There's been a 30-day period of open to comments to insert into that plan, public feedback. It's worth looking into, just so it's on your radar. It's a visually appealing plan. Buses a lot of miss and has some cool facts in there, but very much aligned with KDOT and no real big surprises.
Very good. Thank you. Again, this is Mayor Eddy. I don't know if there are any more updates. I do see Tammy on here. Tammy, do you have any updates for us?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. So with that, if there aren't any, I suppose we can take a light break until 7:00. Is that right, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. So I highly suggest everybody mute yourselves. We'll reconvene at 7:00.
[Music]
Mayor, we're, uh, ready and at seven if you wanna kinda tell everyone to gather up, I guess. Looks like all the commissioners are getting back to their seats.
Okay, we are ready to start our city commission meeting. It is Tuesday, December 1st, at seven o'clock, and this is our first meeting of this month. So please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you. This is Mayor Eddy. We accepted public comments in writing prior to tonight's meeting, and any comments submitted were given to all members of the city commission. And we will continue, we will announce each item whether we received a public comment on that specific item. We are also allowing public comment from those attending the meeting in person tonight, and each public comment should comply with our public comment rules. Each speaker has five minutes, and please clearly state your name and address for the record and for those listening or watching this meeting. We do have the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition making a presentation to the city commission this evening. Are there members present from the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition this evening?
Yes, there are, Madam Mayor. Mike Kearns, Janet Nichols, and can you, is this working? Okay, yes, we are. And I have Janet Nichols with me, and Christine Benny, and we're here representing the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition. And we wanted to thank all of you for your support over all the years for our Veterans Day activities. This year was rather odd, but we still put on a parade. We had about 550 people in the parade, 70 vehicles, and it lasted about a half hour. And the points had very good attendance, people watching the parade. We gave out almost 900 flags in that parade, and we did sanitize them. And that was thanks to the help of the Riley County Police Department. They're a big help in this thing. So, we're here tonight to thank you, and we have a framed thank you. It's a certificate of appreciation for the commission from the Coalition, signed on the back, and there's a little American flag on it, and that was in the parade. So we thought that'd be kinda nice. And I'm told I hand this out over here, and you'll all be able to take a look at it. But again, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming this evening. And we really appreciate all that the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition does in our community, and I do appreciate Christine Benny as well as Janet Nichols. It's a huge project, just the parade itself, and I know there's months and months of planning involved. So thank you for all you're doing, and thank you for presenting this to the city this evening. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comments. So this is Mayor Eddy again. The public was allowed to submit public comments, not related to any agenda items. There was one general public comment received this evening, and this comment is published on the city's website and was provided to each commissioner. If there are any, anyone in the audience that would like to make public comments this evening, please state your name and address for the record, and for those listening or watching so we know who is present. Is there anyone that would like to make public comments this evening?
Mayor, there's no one present.
Thank you, Ron. So we will close public comments, and we'll move on to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments?
Yeah, just wanna remind everybody, we've got the lighted parade this Friday, starts at 5:30. And there's, I think, 38 entries, so we've got pretty good turnout. And be sure you spread yourself out along points and wear your mask and social distance. And then on Saturday, you can get a spruce tree. Parks and Rec is gonna have the tree cutting, which also helps us get rid of trees we don't need out in the park area. So feel free to stop by. I think that kicks off around nine o'clock, and that's a, that's a great event. So, two things to do, you know, this week. Friday, the lighted parade, and Saturday, get, get a, get a tree.
Thank you. Commissioner Morris, did you wanna say something?
I just wanted to bring to people's attention, there was a note in the paper this evening that the Riley County Commission has accepted, has agreed to designate the native stone scenic byway. And now there's a, a good, long loop throughout this north, through the Flint Hills. And it go, it, the route is north on Highway 99 to K-18, and then west to Manhattan, and then south on 177. So that's the route locally. But it does add to our tourism appeal for site bicycling and, and races. And so I just wanted to call to folks' attention, there was discussion of it a couple of years ago, and it's finally a done deal. I'd like to bring the, just make sure that every meeting, we have a mention of COVID and the kind of dire situation we find ourselves in. The right, the paper tonight says that Riley County has recorded another 145 new cases of COVID from last Friday to this Monday. And of course, we know that the Thanksgiving weekend was, you know, accounted for four days, with that not a lot, no testing or little testing. So there's something askew, but just so you know. And that the health director has projected that the local healthcare workers should get some vaccine by Christmas. So that is a, those are good things here in the community. In the meantime, the Board of Education is scheduled to discuss moving to remote, I think, next, for, for the rest of this semester. And of course, that would be reassessed in January when school starts up again. But just Junction City has already moved to go remote, and a number of other communities are also. A lot of the small communities around our, around Manhattan are, and have been, really high numbers of COVID in nursing homes and just in their community. There are a lot of people who are affected by it. So every time there, somebody has it, their whole circle of people, family and friends, can't go to work, they can't go to school, it requires quarantining. And so the consequences are on our economy of that, of COVID are, it's a real drag. And so we just have to pay attention and wear masks and stay six foot apart, minimum, that's a minimum. And, and just wash our hands and, you know, do all the things that we're encouraged to do in order to survive this, and I think all of us would like to survive it. I would mention that last Sunday, the Manhattan Mercury had 11 obituaries in it. The Topeka Capitol had 31 obituaries. Tonight's Manhattan Mercury has eight obituaries. Those numbers are sky high compared to whatever normal, I bet they're double what we have had, would have had a year ago. So I just call those things to your attention and hope that everyone, you know, it's a conscious decision. I got out of my car today to go into City Hall, I think, and I had to go back to my car and put my mask on. Embarrassed myself, but just so you know how, what a deliberate decision it is to wear a mask. And thank you for your cooperation, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Commissioner Strobrock, did you have any comments?
Nope.
How about Commissioner Hattasaw?
Nothing at this time.
All right, this is Mayor Eddy. I just want to say shop local was on Saturday, a small business to shop local was officially on Monday. I'm sorry, Thursday, November 28th, I believe. But we encourage everyone to shop local during this holiday season. Most of our small businesses have options online as well as curbside if you order something and you just wanna pick it up. So we want to encourage everybody doing as much local shopping as possible. A lot of them have A lot of them have taken precautions so that it is safe to shop in Manhattan. And we want our businesses to be successful. And I think the sales tax revenue speaks to the volume at which people are shopping, and we would like to see more of it locally as well. Also, there's free testing on Thursdays. That's provided by the Riley County Health Department as well as the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, as well as the Kansas Department of Emergency Services, I believe. So the testing dates are December 3rd, 10th, 17th, 21st, 28th, and January 7th at the Manhattan Seaco Park. From 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. is one shift, and the next shift is from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and it's right off of Kimball. I highly suggest coming early. Sometimes there's long lines. And even though the students may have left for, for Thanksgiving and just stayed home because there's online classes now till the end of the semester and for final exams, most of them have leases in our community, so most of them are probably back in our community. There's about 300 that might be in residential halls, but campus is still open, so we still have a vibrant community in Manhattan. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of what's happening around town, and if you choose to get tested, Thursdays are your days. If you're not sure if you have, you don't have to have symptoms, you don't even have to live in this county. If you're from anywhere, you can just come and get tested if you have family members and they think they have symptoms or something like that. With that said, I will close Commissioner comments and move on to our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments of the, any items on the consent agenda this evening?
Mayor, Commissioner Estabrock, on the public comment we received, is that? How is that handled? Is that read, or is that just brought to our attention?
On consent agenda items?
Yeah, I think it's item I regarding the Board of, the CEJ letter.
Right, right, okay. This is Mayor Eddy. The public comment, I'm sorry, I didn't get to that page. The public was allowed to submit public comments related to an item on the consent agenda through the city's website or emailing us. There was one public comment regarding law board appointments that were received, and this comment is published on the city's website and was provided to each Commissioner. Did you want to speak to that, Commissioner Estabrock, or?
Just, I think the Coalition of Equal Justice, I encourage people to, to read their letter. They make some valid points, and the Commission could, you know, consider that in the future of how the Law Board functions and how there's transparency. And the appointments are important, as they point out that it's an autonomous entity. It's not something that really advise, is an advisory role.
Yeah, I thought that was a great comment from them, and I do want to move the law appointment things. I guess that's item seven and eight that are on the consent agenda to the end so we can discuss it, because that goes along with what that public comment was all about. They want to know what the logic is for doing this, and I think we should do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so did you want to make a motion to move item I to the end of the consent, end of the general agenda?
Not, not all of item I, because I'm only concerned about item I, seven and eight, which are the law board appointments.
All right, item seven and eight to the end of the general agenda. I did want either Commissioner Morris or Ron to talk about the Brownfield EPA, item number five, I believe. And Commissioner Morris is on the Flint Hills Regional Council, and I just want her to inform the public about what this is and the funding source and how important it is from the Flint Hills Regional Council.
You know, I think it would be good, Kristi Rodriguez is on the call, and maybe she could give us a paragraph, a paragraph on the, on this project, because I don't want to make a mistake, and I think it's important that the details are correct.
Sure, yeah, so, hi, I'm Kristi Rodriguez, Executive Director of Flint Hills Regional Council. So tonight, there is an item to talk about two area plans that we are proposing to move forward that could spark some redevelopment opportunities. It is an agreement, or I'm sorry, a scope of work with STANTEC, Flint Hills Regional Council, and then if approved, with the City of Manhattan. A couple of years ago, in 2018, the Flint Hills Regional Council had applied for funding through the Environmental Protection Agency and was awarded $600,000 to work with individual property owners in some cases. And in some cases, there was an opportunity to conduct area plans that then could be used for either underutilized properties or properties that may have hazardous substance. So there were two areas within Manhattan that were identified as good opportunities to then have those discussions about how to look at both the existing conditions, but a market analysis, and then what redevelopment opportunities there may be, what those strategies look like, and what the next steps would be to go, go forward and implement some of those strategies. So we think that it's a really good opportunity. There's two areas. One is the Plaza West area where the, the Antique Car Museum is. And then the other one is a call extension area, which is just north of the Roundabout area. So the value in planning services is over $120,000, I think it was. I guess I should know that number. Yeah, one, thank you. And so then the other, the other component is we are partnering with Kansas State University, College of Engineer TAB program, and the Landscape Architecture and Planning students to then serve in a partnership, to have student interns serve and assist with the project through a variety of community outreach components throughout that planning process. So it's just a really nice opportunity, partnering with a lot of different groups that can, I think, really kind of spark some interest and, and hopefully get some of those areas redeveloped.
Sounds terrific.
It's a great economic development opportu, opportunity and brainstorming and just trying to help figure out what would be best for those two areas.
Right.
And I told, I told Kristi she wouldn't have to talk.
So this is, this is something that Gary Stith had put together back in 2018. So the vision was there, and Flint Hills Regional Council was successful in getting those awards. And so Jason Hilgers and Eric Cattell have been instrumental to identify the areas that they felt like that the spending could really assist with. So I just appreciate everyone's efforts to, to get this done. The grant ends in September of 2021, so it will be something that we will be moving quickly on and working throughout the spring to then bring back a recommendation. And then I believe STANTEC will be coming back in person to make a final presentation as long as COVID is okay, to do that in person, so.
Yeah, and the reason I bring this up is because it was, you were awarded $600,000, and the $129,000 that being allotted to this particular consultancy firm is from those funds, and the city does not need to match that. So, and this also helps with our environmental aspects of some of those areas that are kind of dead space right now and how to utilize them better. And I think it is an economic impact on our community. So we really appreciate all the work you've done and the future work that we have on this moving forward.
Yes, well, thank you. Yes, it's 100% funded through the grant, and so no out-of-pocket funds. And, and then there's also an area plan that's taking place in Junction City, so there's three altogether. So thank you for your consideration.
If there are no more Commissioner comments on the consent agenda items, are there any public comments this evening?
Mayor, there's no one appearing to make public comments.
All right, seeing no more, no public, or public comment, I'll close public comment. And is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda except for items I, seven and eight, which will be moved to the end of the general agenda.
Is there a second? This is Mayor Eddy. Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor Eddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrock?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
This is Mayor Eddy. First general agenda item is to consider ordinance extending face masks or other face covering requirements, and Katie Jackson, our city attorney, will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I don't have a PowerPoint tonight because this is the fourth time that we're, we're discussing this item. This is a discussion about extending the ordinance that requires face masks within the city limits of Manhattan. The ordinance was first enacted on July 7th, and through its renewals, it is set to expire on its terms on December 31st. We've had prior meetings that have had comments from medical professionals and the Health Department regarding wearing a mask as well as the public. The mask ordinance itself contains background information on the pandemic and the CDC and KDHE recommendations for wearing a mask, among other practices. Kansas cities have the Home Rule authority to adopt masked ordinances, and the Attorney General's Office of Kansas has said that these ordinances are constitutional. The mask requirements are a widespread effort to slow the spread of the virus and to reduce impacts to the healthcare system and to the economy. The governor enacted a statewide mask order last week. I have one quick visual here. Let me pull it up. Are you able to see that, Mayor? Oh, oh, yeah, I need to share it. Sorry. Let me share the screen. One second, please. There we go. Are you able to see now? Okay. Just some background on the governor's order. It was set to take effect on a county basis on the 25th of November. The counties had the option, I try to make this a little bit bigger here. The counties had the option to allow it to take effect, to adopt their own order, or to reject it. And man, the Manhattan city limits, Riley and Potawatomi Counties are both part of our city, and the Riley County Health Officer Julie Gibbs issued her own order. This order that she issued is identical to the mask ordinance that is currently in effect in Manhattan. And however, it only applies in Riley County outside the city limits of Manhattan. And Potawatomi County opted out of the governor's order, so there is not a mask requirement in Potawatomi County at this time. This map that you can see here was a map from the Kansas News Service on the 25th, so it could be slightly changed from that date. It shows the blue counties are the ones that had a mask requirement that they adopted either prior to the governor's order or that they allowed that order to go into effect. And then there's a short list there of the cities as of the 18th who had mask ordinances. There could be others, but this is just some representation for you of the, the application across the state. If the Commission wants a mask requirement to exist in the city limits past January 1st, then the mask order needs to be extended, assuming that the counties don't act, of course. If the Commission does not extend the mask ordinance into 2021, then there will not be a mask requirement in the city limits unless the counties act. The proposed ordinance before you tonight is the same as the prior versions. The only thing that has changed is it's recommended to extend it to May 21st of 2021. This is one week after the last day of USD 383 school year, which is May 14th. And we only need to amend the section 22-73 to extend the ordinance. So that's all that you see in the proposed ordinance, but you have the full ordinance that's been effective since July 7th in your packet. Your packet tonight included letters from K-State, from USD 383, and the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce in support of extending the mask ordinance. We did accept written public comment online prior to the meeting tonight. Those comments are available for the public to view on the city's website. And there is an opportunity tonight also for the public to speak regarding the extension of the mask ordinance. That's all I have, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Eddy. Thank you, Katie. Are there any questions for Katie or comments from Commissioners?
I wanted to ask one question. You know, the, the Health Department put out, you know, the Riley County Health Department, their mandate on masks. What's the enforcement on that?
So when it, when it's a order from a health official, the Health Department official, the way the enforcement works is it can be enforced as a violation of the failure to comply with a lawful order. So it's a, it's a misdemeanor offense. It's in the state statutes. The city of Manhattan has an ordinance that's similar, but that would be the enforcement mechanism that would be an avenue for enforcement of a health official's order. There's different levels of enforcement, and I actually brought the list because there's about five different ways to approach it, but that would be the recommendation for a health, for a Riley County order. It would be prosecuted in municipal.
Yeah, but what, what does that actually mean? I mean, I don't, I don't understand that, and I'm not sure anybody else out there does either.
So since the order applies outside the city limits, it's a misdemeanor offense, a criminal state misdemeanor offense to not, to fail to comply with a lawful order. That misdemeanor would be prosecuted in the Riley County District Court, and the punishment that applies to that level of misdemeanor could be assessed. So in the city of Manhattan, under our ordinance, it's an infraction, and we would prosecute it in the Manhattan Municipal Court. So in other words, the best correlate, they are comparable in the sense that they are processed through the local courts, through the criminal courts, and there's not a civil remedy for those.
Okay, so does that mean RCPD writes a ticket?
They can, yes.
And in the, you know, in the county limits at this point?
They can, they can write a citation, or they can also send a report to the, to the county, and the county attorney can, can generate a complaint against whoever violated the order.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the violation of the statute 65202, which is the failure to obey, sorry, excuse me. The order is issued under that statute. It's a violation, the failure to obey a lawful order is a violation of KSA 21-5904, which is a misdemeanor offense in the state of Kansas. Does that help? To answer your question, yes, the enforcement would be the same. An officer would investigate, respond to the violation, could issue a citation, or could write a report of the violation to send to the prosecutor, which is the same in the city of Manhattan.
Commissioner Estabrock, I have a question that is related to the governor's order with the, for the schools to wear masks. Does that extend beyond the end of the year?
Governor's order, so I know the governor put out some requirements. I don't, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know, Commissioner. No, those aren't, those aren't enforced the same way as these other orders we're talking about, so I could look into that for you. The governor's order, for a matter of reference, they do not have a criminal enforcement process at all. They are enforced civilly through the Attorney General's Office or the county attorneys. So even if there, that is in effect through the same time period, the enforcement mechanism is different.
This is Mayor Eddy. One of the things I do want to say as far as the school, I think each school district can opt out or bring, come up with their own if they choose, and I believe that's what USD 383 did. Some schools opted out of it, and they don't have it. So it's even gone down to not only each municipality, each county, each city, but each school district as well. And that's why we got the letter from our school district.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrock. I, just to follow up on that question, is pointed towards our guidance in our packet for the selection of the date of the expiration is one week after 383 ends their school year. So that was my, my question is related to the timing of the expiration. It's, it's a lot, it's a big chunk to bite off at once. We haven't done that to date in the way that we've gone about our ordinance regarding the face covering. I, my, my questioning being that I'm more comfortable with a shorter date, but was wondering how that impacted. how that impacted with the 383, since that is where this May date comes from.
Sure, Commissioner. When we had a work session on November 10, several Commissioners expressed the desire to have a longer term, so we're not revisiting this in a short turnaround time as we have thus far. So, that was part of the consideration. But the other part was that Kansas State University and the school district have both asked for a mask mandate to be in effect through the school year. So, that was another aspect of it.
And just to clarify for anyone listening, at any time, it can be repealed. In the situation, if there is, if this is ongoing past the first of the year, there's vaccines available, there's less of a need, then it could be rescinded at any time.
That's correct. And we can put a different date, expiration date, on second reading if the commission desires. That's just, we came up with that date based upon the feedback from the commission and the request we received.
My, my thinking is, unfortunately, we do have to, there is a burden that comes onto the commission and our emails and our conversations in public, and the staff have to prepare this. But we're also asking a lot of people to follow this order and this ordinance, to wear the mask and to have compliance. I'm leery of having such a long date in that it actually could be counterproductive in that the compliance could go down. If the light at the end of the tunnel for some people is so far away that they're just going to not wear it. So, that was my, my thinking. My, in my mind, April 1 and a mid-March revisit was, was kind of the spring break. We reassess how the health conditions are with the vaccine rollout, all of the things that are uncertain at this time was, was kind of where my mind was.
See, my thought, about the same as it was back in April, which is that we should do what the county Health Department says, and that would mean we don't need the ordinance because things have changed now. I know the county before opted out of it, but they opted in. And so, that would be, you know, one set of rules for it, and because part of the city's in Pot County, I think what we should do is just, you know, adopt a thing that says we're gonna go with the county Health Department to include everything in the city limits so that the portion in Pot County is covered. And that would solve the problem, and would also solve the problem on when it would expire, because it would be based on what the Health Department decides. And then we'd be taken out of it, and that's how it should have been to begin with. We should have stuck with the EOC and not gone our own route, and I think I said that back in April, and I haven't changed my mind on that.
Commissioner, just for clarification, each county would have to act. Pot County would have to act in order to have a mask requirement in the city limits of Manhattan, and Riley County would act for the city limits that are in Riley County. Just, you mentioned that the counties could act. Each county would have to act in order to cover.
I know what I'm saying is, we could say we're gonna adopt the Riley County Health Department order and apply it to that portion of the city that is in Pot County. We have the ability to do that, just like we do with this ordinance.
Well, I see what you're saying.
And then, then what would happen would be if the Riley County, you know, Health Department decides masks aren't needed after 1 April, then they're not needed anywhere in the city limits after 1 April. But essentially, what we're doing is we're letting the Health Department do their job and not trying to do it for them.
So, Commissioner, the mechanism for the city to do that is to adopt an ordinance. That's the only mechanism that we have, and we could apply it in that portion. But then bear in mind, the Riley County order does not currently include the city limits that are in Riley County. So, they would have to cover that, which I think.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying. We just reword that, make it, do what I've, what I've just tried to explain, if that'll work.
To clarify, this is why we, the county line, the difference in the county mechanisms of triggering their orders is how, the basis of why I felt the city needed to invoke home rule and voted in favor to begin down this process, so we have consistency across the entire city. At that point, my understanding was that for us to do that, we are, our hands are tied in that we can't create the same type of enforcement that the Riley County and the Health Officer, or any county Health Officer, has the liberty to do. We can only create an ordinance that is, in fact, a infraction under a different branch of how that's, how the accountability and the violation is enforced. Is that different? What Commissioner Butler is describing, is that even possible, given those conditions, for us to mirror the order that the county has?
I would suggest that what the Riley County Health Department has done in their order is the closest enforcement mechanism to what the city of Manhattan has currently. So, the only mechanism the city of Manhattan has is, as you recognize, the prosecution of an infraction in the Manhattan Municipal Court. Issuing the order through the Health Officer invokes a different process than if the county had its order alone. So, there's, there's five ways this can occur. The governor, the county commission, the Health Department, the Health Officer, the cities. Sorry, there's two different mechanisms for the Health Officer. They chose the Health Officer, I would assume, because they have a mechanism that's closest to what the city of Manhattan has, which is they're prosecuting a violation in the Riley County District Court. And in their case, it's a misdemeanor offense. It's a misdemeanor. So, it really is the closest enforcement path to what the city of Manhattan has and our only enforcement. The other ways are civil enforcement paths that would involve the Attorney General or the county attorney, which aren't really, they don't really correlate with our process at all. So, I would say that these are, these two are the closest in enforcement that, that the county and the city could achieve.
But, but we, as a city, cannot, cannot require in the, on the Pot County side, their health of, or, there is no mechanism there. It's a, if they've opted out, if they've chosen not to, to go to the same route as our Health Officer in Riley County, then we have the same dilemma that we've had from the beginning, in which the city has to go back to the, the ordinance, because that's the only mechanism that exists.
That's correct.
This is, this is Mayor Eddy. You know, I think we're probably making it more complex than necessary. I think, and we've had this for several months in the city of Manhattan. I think the mindset in Manhattan is that the city of Manhattan has the face mask mandate. It's, we've been consistent on that message. I don't see it's necessary to change any of the messaging or even the way the ordinance is. I think having it, the deadline extended to May, we don't have to have this discussion continuously unless we want to repeal it. You know, we always have that option of repealing it anytime we want, if we feel it's not necessary. But all indicators are that the vaccine is not going to go to all common folks until at least six months from now, at the minimum, for long-term, for long-term facilities and healthcare, healthcare officials. All of, there's a lot more on that priority list, and the rest of us are not there just yet. And then they still have to see how well it's working and how they're going to distribute it to everybody. But I think this has been working. I don't, I don't think anybody's really been cited for a face mask and being out of compliance. I think they've either just been reminded or given a face mask, or, you know, there have been other steps taken so that people follow the, to stay in compliance. Nobody's been jailed over it, but I think there's, like I said, the mindset in Manhattan is that we have a face mask mandate, and people are pretty much complying, and I don't see any problem with it right now. We're probably looking for problems that don't exist with what we have currently.
Commissioner Hattasol here. I'll go ahead and say something I probably shouldn't. The, at this point, after eight months, everybody's made up their mind about whether they think face masks are helpful and effective and such. And the one thing, we, we all know somebody that's been very good about social distancing, wearing their mask, and they still got it. So, it's, it's no 100% preventer, just like the vaccine's not going to be 100% effective, because no vaccine's 100% effective. And so, the one thing that's been missing out of all of this discussion about COVID response, and how do we slow it, stop it, and stuff like that, and that is giving people a chance to vote on it. And the way you vote on, on an ordinance like this, or the face mask thing, is to make it a recommendation. And so, by this point, we've, we've, people have been beat up by the state and the local, whether, whatever business they're in, has had to change the way they do business pretty much one way or the other, and they've never had any opportunity to really say, provide their input and say, yes, I think I want to do this. And people have sure not had any opportunity to, to sort of vote their opinion on, on the face mask and, and social distancing, and not being able to watch their kids play basketball or wrestle and, or things like that. And so, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against it on the same reason I always have, which is why it should be a recommendation, not mandatory. By now, people have made up their mind about it and are either gonna, and most people are, well, aren't wearing them willingly. They don't like it. A lot of people don't like it. A lot of people gives them a false sense of security. But it's still, a virus is a virus, and it's, if it wants to get you, it's gonna get you. And the only thing you can really do is try to improve your own immune system strong enough to where you can fight off anything, just like the other thousand viruses you're exposed to every week. Flu and mono and everything else like that, that's out there, just lurking, trying to find a weakened host. And obviously, nursing homes are full of weakened hosts to attack, and even though they've got the strictest guidelines for washing and masking and everything, it still gets there, just like it still gets people that do everything else right. And so, there's no, there's no silver bullet that's gonna fix this and make everybody bulletproof to this. So, we just do the best you can, try to take on your own responsibility for your health. That's where the responsibility for your health lies, begin with. But, yeah, wear your masks, and I, I think May is way too long. I'd like to see March, but I'm gonna vote for, vote against it, no matter what the timeframe is, simply because I think it continue to be a recommend, should be a recommendation, because there's, people still need to have some rights to decide some aspects of their lives. And, and I know people will say, well, you're gonna kill me if you're not wearing your mask. Doubtful, but I, I know that you're gonna get that argument, so I would like it to be a recommendation.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to have public comment before the Commissioners say how they're gonna vote, so that they will have comfortably heard the public?
Yes, this is Mayor Eddy. We've had several folks write in. So, the public comment was allowed to submit, the public was allowed to submit public comments related to this item. There were two public comments that were officially submitted, and several of us received emails that were not through the website itself. If there are any in-person comments this evening, those wanting to make comments can do so at this time. Please come to the, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and for those listening or watching this evening, and you have five minutes to speak. Ron, would you please guide me in this and let me know if there's any public there to comment?
We do have, Mayor.
Okay, so please come on up and state your name, address, and.
Is this the microphone I use? Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Linda Cook. I am the Chief of Staff and Director of Community Relations for Kansas State University. I know we already sent you a letter in support of extending this ordinance, and I just want to reiterate how critical it is right now, because we are seeing a huge spike in COVID cases, not only in Kansas, but throughout the country. And numerous public health organizations have studies that show face masks are a key defense in helping to flatten the curve and stop the spread of the virus. And it's really critical for us right now, because our healthcare system is worn down. And if we can help flatten that curve by wearing face masks, it's gonna help us, because we, they, we may not have medical staff to take care of people that are sick or have the supplies that we need. So, flattening this, this spike right now is critical. It, it really probably only needs to go on for another couple of months. We know the vaccine is coming, but it will be a slow process and may take into the summer before, you know, people have very much widespread distribution of the vaccine. So, we very much appreciate your support of this ordinance when it was first approved, and again, when you reextended it in August, and we just asked that you support it again. We know that when people are given some instructions, the behavior is they will follow it. And it has been effective, and we just ask for your support in continuing and extending it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate it. Whoever's next?
Good evening, Dennis Cook, 6854 Chincapan Circle, not related to Linda. My question is just on the enforcement side, and how this ordinance is written. If an individual should be seen in a business and they're not wearing a mask, can the business be cited? Or is it just strictly an individual? I haven't heard that get discussed. That would be my question. Thanks.
This is Mayor Eddy. Katie, I'm not sure exactly how it's written.
Mayor, would you like me to address a public comment question at this time, or would you like to hear the rest of public comment? Typically, we don't respond to the questions. Just want to clarify what you'd like to do.
Oh, thank you for that. Let's wait till the end after all public comment. I, it's hard for me to see how many people are out there, so we'll wait till all public comment is completed then.
Mayor, there doesn't appear to be any other commenters?
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. I think that was, one of the questions was, who gets cited? First of all, so far, I believe, from what I hear from RCPD, I don't believe the, there was citations as far as fines, or anybody was jailed on, due to the mandate. With that, I will let Katie respond to that question.
Thank you, Mayor. My mayor, or my microphone on the side is broken, so I have to keep running back up here. Sorry about that. The, the ordinance has never carried the possibility of jail time. It has a minimal fine plus court costs, so jail time would not be assessed for this infraction. There have been approximately five citations that I'm aware of written, and the individuals paid the fine and the court costs and didn't pursue any other type of challenge to the citations.
Thank you.
But, but the question there is, if I go into a bar in Aggieville without a mask, I understand RCPD can write me a ticket, but can they write the bar owner a ticket? That was the question. And I think that did happen.
So, Commissioner, the ordinance, which is modeled after the governor's order and similar to the Riley County Health Department order, states that in those, in that situation, that the enforcing authority has the option to write the individual a mask, or can write, sorry, a mask, a citation for not wearing a mask, or they can write the business citation for failing to comply with, to, to require the public or their employees to comply. I think that in terms of which, which option would be chosen would be based upon the facts.
Yeah, and I know that we had, we had a case in one of the restaurant facilities where I think the owner was cited because some of his employees weren't, weren't masked, and that's what the question is. And that's one of the issues I have with, with the way our ordinance is worded. I don't like that.
There's two separate violations, and so that, you're correct that it could be the individual and/or the business.
Okay. Mayor Eddy, thank you. Are there any other Commissioner comments or questions before we move to a motion on this item?
Linda Morse, Mayor Linda Morse, I would like to speak, just express appreciation to the people in the community who have taken the initiative to get in touch with us and talk, and almost, oh, probably we've received four or five opposing any action, and the rest of them have been in favor of it, and they've been very credible types of, and well-thought-out rationale for continuing the face mask ordinance. We have, I believe that, that as Riley County Health Department speaks to the low number here compared to other, like Topeka and other communities, I believe the face mask ordinance here has been a major contributor to that lessening of COVID numbers here. I know that face masks. lessening of COVID numbers here. I know that face masks are not the only thing that protects us. It, it just keeps my germs with me. And that's what it's supposed to do. But if we all do it, we're, we are better as a whole. And that's how I am, I'm not thinking of each individual and their rights to get through this pandemic. I'm thinking of the, our collective, our responsibility to the greater good of our community. And I'm certainly willing to wear a mask, and I encourage everyone to wear a mask. We six-foot distance, we, we have these small steps that we can take that collectively will make a difference and do make a difference. I appreciate Kansas State University's position, Fort Riley Commanding General, the school district. We have to respect and work collaborative with our other governmental units. Just to clarify, I would not be in favor of the city canceling its, its mask ordinance. The county and the health officer have not been firm, and have been very, quite frankly, very weak. The county has, Commission has refused as the Board of Health. The, the Health Director has not been able to prevail upon them to adopt a mask ordinance. I'm gonna call it an ordinance. And so if we are serious, then we have to take this action. So I would just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Eddy. I feel this is, like I said, we've had it for a few months. I think we should extend it. The mindset is in Manhattan. We have a face mask ordinance. There'll always be a few who won't wear it, and a great majority of us will wear it and take all precautions necessary. We're not here to change anybody's habits tonight, but we are just extending what we already have in place, because it is one of the small mitigation steps we can take. With that, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Mayor Linda Morris, I move that the Commission approve the reading of an ordinance amending Section 22-73 of the City Code, extending the term of the face mask ordinance requirements to 11:59 PM on May 21, 2021.
This is Mayor Eddy. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'd like to amend that motion, or have a chance to add Commissioner comments.
You can, this is Mayor Eddy. You can add comments, but I think if you're gonna amend it, we need to vote on this first and then do an amendment.
Roberts rules, Roberts rules say that we have, if Aaron makes the motion to amend, then we would have to vote on that. And it gets a second, then we would have to vote on the amendment first.
I don't think the Commission operates under Roberts rules. You keep bringing that up, Commissioner Morris, but that's not what our policies say.
Commissioners, if you, you have a motion, if there's not a second, then the motion dies and a new motion can be made.
Commissioner Estabrook, you have the floor.
My, I would prefer that, one, I wanted to comment that as, I think, I, as far as I know, the only Commissioner that has been sick, I wanted to make it clear that the, the mask ordinance, although, are wearing a mask, perhaps without an ordinance, people would wear it, perhaps not. But the fact that I was wearing my mask, I, I was in close contact with numerous people, and they all ended up testing negative, other than my family, who I was around without a mask. So my little case of that example in my life experience showed to me that it is important, in some regard, it, as commented about not being a magic bullet, but it did prevent, at least in my situation, me spreading it to people I was around unknowingly while I was contagious. So I think that's important. My second point, that I wanted to bring it in a little bit to the April 1st, as the amendment, or as, I don't, I, I was going to amend, but if we can adjust the motion to read April 1st, because there is a attitude of, this is never going to end. There is a large component of our community that is upset with the Commission. There's two Commissioners that are, have been against this from the beginning. And I think extending it to May is a little bit farther than I feel comfortable, only because I think it deserves to be revisited because of the dissenting opinions in our community that need to be heard again if we're going to continue this throughout the spring. So this gets us through, April gets us through the winter, in my mind. We revisit, and we talk about spring, and the conditions have changed, and people have an opportunity to voice their dissent. That is what I wanted to offer as my, my comments, Mayor.
This is Mayor Eddy. I think, I don't think, you know, extending it to May 21st, is that far from April? I think extending it to May makes sense to me because of the University of, like I said, USD 383. And we're gonna continue this discussion. It's always going to be this discussion. The discussion is not gonna change. What I do see is, a lot of people following it. There was a lot of resistance at the beginning, and now there's a lot more compliance. And I don't want there to be a question in our public's mind, that each time they have to, oh my God, is the, you know, what are they gonna do now with this? Or what are they not gonna do with it now? I think it should be just a settled matter, and give some, some stability in our community, that this is what's in place for a few months. And it's going to be following what the major, major entities, government agencies, as University, Fort Riley, and all of these other organizations that we work with also have in place. I think that's what I'm looking at. I don't mind repealing it, if everything is good and our numbers are done and we don't need it anymore. But I think even the Riley County one does not have a deadline. So if we go with no deadline, that's fine. Riley County one, that's all they have, Order Number 19, till whenever, there's, there's no expiration date on that one. But this is, is this the third or fourth time we're visiting it? And we have the same conversation every time. So I'm comfortable with the May date that's on there. I think the fatigue is not so much from face masks, but just from COVID. I'm fatigued from COVID and not seeing my family. Not from wearing a face mask. So I think that, that's where the fatigue is. And the, the sooner we can get this under control, the sooner we can all be with our loved ones.
And Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrook, but my thought is, the fatigue, you're right, is getting the, the virus under control, but also, we should be moving towards getting, we should be exploring those times. It should be a celebration of sorts when we can no longer have this ordinance. And if we're not there in, on April 1st, we're not there. If we're going to push this off until almost, you know, summer, that, that's just so far in some people's minds. I think it's easier to celebrate if we're able to get there, and also highlight the, by April 1st, and highlight the difficulties if we're not, to not revisit it. I don't, I don't foresee us coming into this, to revisit it until we're required to. That's the danger of putting the date out so far. The, it removes the input from the public.
That's the date that's going, this is Mayor Eddy, that's the date that your children are gonna have, and college students are going to have. If it makes you feel better, certainly we can move it to April. If, if we need to move forward with it. That, that is not a hardcore deadline. But I feel the major stakeholders in this already have it till May.
It, it makes me feel better to give the opportunity for that input to be voiced without, at that April 1st deadline. And the, the major stakeholders are potentially, you know, they, they've changed their schedules and they change things all the time. They're, they don't have to go through a public voting process, and they're not elected officials. I feel we have a different standard, and we should hold the public, or give the public an opportunity to weigh in.
Again, Mayor Eddy, I, I do believe they have weighed in, but this is, if you want to do it a fourth time, or however many times we need to keep doing this, we'll continue. We will do what's in the best, best interest of the community. I don't think, I don't think there's gonna be a 5-0 vote on this at any time. So that, that, I don't believe we're here to change anybody's minds. We are here to continue what we've been doing, in the best interest of the community.
There would probably be a 5-0 vote on it if it was, as Commissioner Hattasol mentioned, if it was a resolution, and we did education, and we did encouragement, and that might get some of the recalcitrant people that don't want to wear a mask at all, because they hate our ordinance, and they just, you know, refuse to do it because of the ordinance. They might actually comply then. And I, I answered a number of emails on the topic and said, I'm, I, I'm more into a theory why approach, and I'm, I'm talking about Douglas McGregor and The Human Side of Enterprise, which is a book written in the 60s on business. There's two ways to motivate people. You can take the X approach, which is hammer them, which is what we've been doing. Or you can take the Y approach and encourage them and educate, which is what Commissioner Hattasol's been talking about. And I think at this point, that would be more effective. And that's sort of what Commissioner Estabrook is talking about, because people have gotten to the point where they say, this is hopeless. We'll be wearing masks until December. And while everybody's saying masks are highly effective, I'm also getting emails and people are saying, if this is so effective, why'd the numbers go up? And I, I scratched my head about that. I guess I can say, well, maybe it would have been worse if we weren't wearing masks. But we don't really know, because we don't have any data. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, the population out here is split. I mean, you may have the attitude that everybody out there loves the idea of masks. Not so, in, in the different returns I'm getting. And no matter what you do, it's wrong. But, you know, if you want a 5-0 vote, we put in a resolution, we support the Health Department, and then you've got everybody united. I got a couple emails on that. Why can't you get united? Well, I've always wanted to be united against the Health Department, with the Health Department. And we haven't done that. Now, you also said, well, they don't have a deadline, but everybody understands that the Health Department Director reviews this stuff every week. And as soon as they feel comfortable, this isn't needed, they'll get rid of it. People view the Commission as, you know, you put it in there till 31 May, it'll be there 31 May, and then you'll extend it to 31 December. That's the attitude a number of the folks have. So I, so I sort of like, you know, Mark Hattasol's approach on this, which is leaning towards theory why. Let's educate, let's push it. The, most of the population's complying anyway. When I go around town, I, I don't see a lot of people without masks. I saw one in, I think it was Orshlin's the other day, wasn't wearing a mask. And, you know, people just sort of stayed away from him, so I guess it didn't really matter. But, but I think you've got about as much compliance as you're gonna get. And I never did like RCPD being involved in enforcement, so.
Thank you. This is Mayor Eddy. So does Commissioner Morris's motion have a second?
I would ask Aaron a question. Aaron, if I withdraw my motion, would you, will you make a motion to have the ordinance in effect until April 1st?
Yes.
All right. Linda Morris and I withdraw the motion that I made earlier.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Can Mr. Estabrook?
Mayor, I move that we approve the reading of an ordinance amending Section 2273 of the City Code, extending the term of the face mask, mask ordinance requirements to 11:59 PM on April 1, 2021.
Mayor, I second the motion.
Mayor Eddy, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
No.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Eddy?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Thank you. This is Mayor Eddy. Our second general agenda item is the Laramie Street, Laramie Street, 14th Street, and Anderson Avenue, Aggieville Parking Garage item. Tonight's presenters are Jason Hilders, our Deputy City Manager, Barry Schmidt, McGowan Gordon Construction, as well as Ben Flowers from McGowan Construction as well. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. So this evening, we want to talk about guaranteed maximum price submitted by McGowan Gordon Construction for the parking garage and the Laramie Street improvements. The community has been working on the Aggieville Community Vision for about five years now. There is still a website that's very active. It has all the updates that we have provided the community over the last five years. There's some great information at that site. I would encourage anybody looking for any type of history or background on Aggieville to visit that site. Ben Schmuel and our Community Development Department has done a great job of accumulating all the documents, all the processes, all the plans, and, and all the exciting improvements that we are engaging on in Aggieville. As I mentioned, the last five years, a lot of effort, time, resources, and expense has been took, put towards this vision. Every time we talk about Aggieville, and obviously tonight, more appropriately than others, I like to point out, when, when I started with this city, the CIP had a request from the Planning Board. And that Planning Board, obviously not elected, citizens appointed by the governing body at the time, had parking garages in both Aggieville and downtown. And it was always interesting to me to see those in each year for a long time, before the community is finally at the point now, 20 some years later, where we're actually possibly going to build one. That vision, though, has been shared by citizens in this community for quite some time. And obviously, we have a garage downtown, and we're on the cusp of one in Aggieville. A lot of these images are really a review. We were back in front of you in May with some concepts and design for the garage. Wanted to provide you with a few of these images that are in your packet. This is obviously the one off of North Manhattan, next to Rally House, the stair tower, and the, the east side of the garage face there on North Manhattan Avenue. You can see in the middle, that second floor connection, which is part of the construction contract. We will come within about four inches of the Rally House building. We will not be connecting, or punching through, or working with Rally House just yet, but we anticipate that in the next, in, in the very near future. This is an image from the southeast corner of the parking garage. So this is basically North Manhattan and Laramie intersection, looking back to the northwest. You can see the retail frontage on the first couple floors. From a, a design standpoint, there's only one floor, though, of that retail frontage, on both the North Manhattan and on the Laramie side. Roughly 4,000 square feet on each side, so a total of about 8,000 square feet. The finishing of the upper two floors is a result of the Commission feedback that we received in May. We stopped any type of treatment beyond that second story. But we do have some amenities there on the first and second floor. The alley, so this is a cross-section view of the alley. So if you were to be able to look at the alley in the front of the north-facing wall of the parking garage, which essentially you'd have to get rid of Rally House and that entire building to look at this view, but it gives you an opportunity to see this as if it is a blank wall. Gives you an idea of the first floor view, and the upper decks, as you make your way to the upper tiers of the garage. But it gives you also a sense of just kind of the materials they plan to use in the alley, that look and that feel, from this perspective, from a pedestrian standpoint. They've identified some different options of the metals, and I do believe the GMP includes a specific price point for that. There are a number of panels that are on a specific price point, uh, for that. There are a number of panels that are on the wall as you walk through, uh, and this next image kind of brings to light some of the imagery from Aggieville that may be incorporated on those panels. I think there are roughly eighty, uh, or eighty-five panels within that corridor that we'll be able to highlight and showcase a lot of pictures from today and the past of Aggieville. So this gives you a kind of a, a view looking down the alley to the west. It opens up at the end of the alley where Good Sense and Insomniac Cookies is located, uh, but obviously is bordered by Rally House and the garage. Those panels on the left, again, where those images will start showing up. We can rotate those images. It'll be an opportunity for different portraits and images of Aggieville and the community to be highlighted. I wanted to highlight the roof structure that is now part of the design and part of the GMP. A lot of effort and energy went into creating, uh, a pedestrian level scale for this. Instead of looking up and having five stories on one and the complete Rally House on the other, it tries to bring that down to a pedestrian scale. There, there's this cloud-type feature, which will have these panels, but the roof structure above it serves a, a number of different practical applications. Weather will be able to be drained off and, and not fall within the alley. We've also looked at keeping trash and other things from being tossed off the top of the garage into the alley. This will obviously catch that and will be able to remove that. We, we've even talked about screening some of those fourth and fifth floors, so you won't be able to throw any type of projectile or possibly even look over and, and try to get on that rooftop. Um, there are a number of, again, practical applications there. It's one of those amenities and one of those features that, as the design team was coming up with them, uh, we talked about. Um, clearly, there's some advantages there, but there's some costs associated with it, too. Wanted to highlight that because it wasn't part of our May discussion, and it's, it's come up as a feature since May, and wanted to make sure you were well aware of that. Streetscape, so Laramie Street Improvements. Um, we highlight, this image obviously highlights 12th Street, which 12th Street is really close to completion. I think we're a week or two away from fully opening 12th Street. Uh, as a pedestrian, you can walk through 12th Street now. They've opened up the west half, so the west half of the street and the sidewalk against Tanner's is all open. Uh, you can walk through there t- today. Uh, and now we jump into the Laramie Street Improvements in front of the garage, focusing basically from North Manhattan on Laramie to 14th, new intersection at 14th. Then we'll go with new sidewalks and pedestrian, uh, level amenities on either side of North Manhattan. We are going to get into 14th and Anderson. Uh, we have some, uh, issues there today that we'd really like to address since we're coming up to the project anyway. Our engineering staff and Olson have come up with a concept to address some of the vehicle and pedestrian issues that are currently taking place at 14th and Anderson. This is a little bit closer view of Laramie on 14th Street, Burger King, Quick Shop. Uh, the access points on Quick Shop remain. The Burger King access will be removed. Uh, this, this is something that isn't highlighted in this image. This is prior to our negotiation, but we have, uh, reached a, a negotiated point with Burger King and the ownership, uh, to go ahead and remove that, uh, exit feature. Uh, so po- folks will have to come in and exit off Laramie, uh, to get in and out of Burger King. Their drive-through will continue to u- be used. They'll just loop around the building and exit onto Laramie instead of pulling out onto 14th. Uh, since this will be a, a signalized intersection, this no longer is going to function very well, uh, for a car trying to leave Burger King. Wanted to bring that to your attention, too. Uh, so we have streetscape then on Laramie Street, very minimal, uh, streetscape, not a lot of room for us here. Uh, obviously, there's not a lot of parking. There's basically two-way traffic. Uh, we get that center turn lane in, but there's just not a whole lot of room then for a lot of amenities in our sidewalks. We did what we could in front of the parking garage from North Manhattan to the edge, uh, with, with the space we have, but we're not going to get a whole lot of amenity moving to the west along Laramie Street.
Jason, are there's a bunch of chairs or benches or something on that, in that southeast corner? Is that what those represent, those little light things?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll show another image here in a second. Commissioner Hattasall that, yeah, there, there's ample room to put some pedestrian level amenities there. So this next image is 14th and Anderson, and, and Olson's in the room. Mark Baychamp's here. I know Brian and Rob are around, too. They could talk about this. There's some, there's some real issues at Anderson that we have today. We have a lot of infrastructure there that's kind of crumbling from a pedestrian level. Uh, we also have a conflict right now. Um, as you're northbound on, uh, 14th Street and you want to go westbound, there's a lot of times, there's a s- a pedestrian movement that is prohibiting that left-hand turn. So we have a conflict between the pedestrian movement and the predominant movement northbound, headed west. We're going to fix that with this intersection. There are a lot of curbs and islands that are deteriorating at that intersection as well. Uh, it's in need of some attention. We have a storm drainage inlet on that southeast corner that is in disrepair. Uh, it has been ran over too many times and it has collapsed. So we have worm's cones in there right now, just holding it off for this project. So if you need more information on what it is, we're trying to accomplish beyond that, we can get Mark and, and Brian and Rob to elaborate on that. But that is part of this project. We've had them design it. It's added roughly $300,000 to $400,000 to the total bill, uh, but it is an intersection they feel like needs to be addressed with this project. So tonight, we're focused on the guaranteed maximum price. So that GMP amount that's highlighted in that tan color that's bold, the 13.8 million for the garage and the 2.2 million for the street are what we're looking for the commission to execute this evening. All those other costs associated with the project are either part of existing contracts or part of acquisition and right away, again, part of an existing contract that's currently underway. So we have that 13.8 for the garage and that 2.2 for the street. Everything else is pretty much underway with both Olson and McCallan. The alternates on this sheet are two things that I want to highlight, uh, as part of the project. Those are decision points for this evening. We need input and feedback as to whether you want to add those to the GMP. The current GMP, as you see, 13.8, does not have these features. We would, if the commission desires to add them, we can do some quick math and adjust that motion to include them. Those features are, I'll talk about next. I want to remind you all of where we've been with this GMP and this project. When we've been talking to you in the past, it's been a lot about total project costs. And, and in May, we are at 16.7 million. We got feedback from the commission that night to take about $370,000 away from that facade to lower that cost. So we left in May with a revised total project cost of about 16.3 million. We're now at 17.7, and I wanted to highlight where that $1.4 million is within the project. As I mentioned, the intersection of 14th and Anderson, we added $400,000. Easement and acquisition costs, that's another $200,000. That wasn't part of that estimate provided in May. There's a deep foundation increase, so we ended up coring and, and taking samples out of that site, realized we needed to go, uh, to a further depth to secure that building. Schedule and management increase, those are costs associated with McCallan that we're going to see with really any GMP coming forward. Design fee increase, again, looking at the project in itself over the last four months, moving that design further ahead to get to the point where we could bid those things out. The exterior facade finishes are a result of taking away the 373, but adding back color and some lines. So we talked about that last time in terms of just blank gray concrete versus, if you go down to the parking garage at Third and Fort Riley Boulevard, we have some lines and a little bit different tint on that concrete, and that's essentially what this is. This 200K accommodates for all that concrete to have some, some lines and some definition, so it's not just blank. The 250 was the increase for the alley. When we were in front of you in May, we had about an $800,000 budget for the alley. We're just over a million dollars for the alley in this GMP. So I wanted to make sure you all were very well aware of the $1.4 million increase and where those items, uh, came out in that full project cost of 17.7 million dollars. The add alternates of those two identified projects, uh, it's the southeast corner. Uh, there's a trellis, which is very similar to what we did on the south end, uh, parking garage that allows the, the vines to grow in up the side, give it some, some color, some texture. Uh, the other is that kinetic panel that's at top two floors. Uh, you can see there, combined, about a $200,000 increase. It breaks up that long stretch of wall and gives it a little bit different context on the sec- at the third and fourth and fifth story there. Uh, the trellis obviously gives it corner, an opportunity to, uh, have something in addition to make it a little more green. Um, those are options that the design team felt like perhaps we would want to explore, just given the length and the size and the, the, uh, appearance of this building at that corner. This is what it's proposed to be in the GMP. It, it's not, um, it's, there's, there's, there's some differences. I think most of the differences are in the upper floors, the, the lower two floors. It's not unattractive. It's just bringing more plants and more green into that, that area. So again, we're here this evening, the GMP, 13.8 million on the garage. We get 450, uh, additional stalls with this project. Uh, that net gain to the district, we've talked about, uh, in, in the lower threes, uh, when you cancel out, uh, the stalls we're going to lose in this paved lot, plus the ones where the hotel is occupied and the 10 stalls on street, on, on 12th Street. Then the Laramie Street improvements at about 2.2 million. Both of these projects had bond resolutions associated with them for the design and the construction. The design on parking garage was slightly over a million dollars, so we had a bond resolution for that. And then Laramie Street, we didn't envision 14th and Anderson in that project authorization resolution. So both of these come back as amended bond resolutions in order to finance the full projects for both of these improvements. Tax increment financing, that is the primary purpose for the parking garage, is to dedicate that 20-year stream of revenue towards the debt service on the garage. We anticipate those revenues from the TIF covering 11 to 12 million dollars in principal. We expect 17 to 20 million in total revenue, but from a debt service perspective, it's 11 to 12 million in principal. So we have about a four to five million dollar gap that we anticipate with the garage. Half-cent sales tax, obviously passing in November, provides us that opportunity to look at this debt service and utilize that revenue stream potentially. A reminder, that 70% that was dedicated towards public infrastructure and debt was about 4.5 million a year for that 10-year period. Um, this has obviously been a project we've talked about in the community for, for some time, even when we were out for the Point 3. Aggieville was very much a part of that, uh, discussion. And as we rolled into the Point 5, and we talked with you in January and talked with you in the spring and then the summer, there were just a constant, uh, reminder of, as we move forward with these major initiatives needing a revenue stream. So Point 5, I think it's pre- pretty well-known that it's been part of the mix for the future of those public improvements and debt. The 2.6 for the Laramie Street Improvements, uh, obviously, uh, same type of scenario where we'd be looking for that revenue stream. Debt for both of these projects, uh, won't start until 2024. Uh, these temp notes that we'll be issuing, won't be issued until next spring to cover both of these projects if we proceed. Uh, so that'll give us three and a half years before we're in a, a mode of actually issuing the debt and then being required to start making annual debt payments. Uh, combination again for the garage of TIF, uh, which we anticipate will cover quite a bit of the garage, and then the remainder on the Point 5. Be happy to answer any questions. Uh, I know we've been working on this a lot. Uh, you've had a lot of presentations, a lot of different, uh, pieces of information. Uh, compliments to McCallan Gordon and Olson and their teams. Um, these projects aren't easy. They are very, very complicated. Obviously, a lot of money being contemplated this evening, uh, but we want to make sure, uh, you're as informed as we possibly can be and, uh, as we consider these, uh, major improvements in our community. So happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thanks, Jason. Uh, this is Mayor Eddy. Does, uh, anybody, either Barry Schmidt or Ben Flowers, want to speak to the, um, to this project before we go ahead with Commissioner comments and questions? Or do they want to wait?
I think they're here for questions, Mayor. Uh, if you have some, they're, they're happy to, uh, answer those from the contractor's perspective.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, this is Mayor Eddy again. I'll open it up for Commissioner questions and comments regarding this project.
Commissioner Hattasall here. Um, on the 14th and Anderson deal, I was thinking 12 years ago that storm inlet was a problem. Is this still the same problem? Because people would step off the curb and fall into that and break it. I think somebody broke a leg 12 years ago or something and...
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. Brian Johnson, City Engineer. You're exactly right. That one, however, is on the southwest corner.
Oh, okay, that's the one I remember.
Yep, we rebuilt it, built a new handicap ramp in there, became ADA compliant, and then moved that inlet a little bit less. And it was, it was actually 12 years ago exactly. It was, somebody drug me out there my second day here and said, hey, can you fix this for me? So...
So, so what's the new problem inlet?
It's on the other corner.
The east?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because those turning radiuses are so small that trucks continually drive over. And we actually have replaced, uh, the signal in the island and the signal in the southeast corner several times.
And, and we're able to expand the intersection enough where that shouldn't happen going forward?
The radiuses become bigger, the handicap ramps become ADA compliant, because they're not compliant today. And then we also get push button, those push button heads. It's a full new signal.
Okay, all right. That's it for you, Jason?
Thank you.
Um, I like the, um, I like the trellis part. I'm a little irked that when we decided not to do the kinetic panels, we saved 363,000, but when we add in one-sixth the size of kinetic panels, we only save 60% instead of saving 90%. Um, I like that idea. It seems terrifically expensive for no more than what we get with that. Is there a reason that that's, one part of it is quite a bit more expensive than doing the whole thing with, on a, on a perfect basis?
Yeah, I, I think your question is valid. I, I don't know if Patrick or, uh, McCallan can speak to that. I know Ben got the pricing, but Patrick did look at the design a little bit.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Hattasall. The, the primary reason is that a lot of the, of the work that goes into that kinetic panel is the design and engineering of it. There's a lot of upfront cost. Once you've got that figured out, you're just repeating it over and over again, but there is a setup and design charge for getting that engineered and created. So it is, the less you do, the more expensive per square foot it is.
Okay, so if we decided to do a little bit more, it wouldn't be the same ratio of the pricing?
Yeah, I think there's some economies to scale.
It'll all kick in like that, so. Okay, I, all right, I kind of like it. I don't know if I like it $142,000 worth, but, um, I, I kind of like it. But I think the trellis is fairly essential, I think, to provide some, I like, I, well, I don't mind those Aggieville, colorful Aggieville signs. Um, I think the, the, the green people of the community would like to have the, the green garden part. And I, you, you said you'd address that corner. Is that a, a drive-through thing there? Is that just a long ramp and, or was the plan to have some benches there? The one map looked like it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll try to find a better picture. Uh, there is quite of a, an incline from that corner heading towards 14th Street. And I know Mark can talk about it at length if he'd like him to. Uh, but it, it is a, a sizable ramping up, uh, from that corner. So what you see there is, is, is an attempt at a gradual slope, um, that, that building in that corner, uh, will entertain. Those site features, let me see if I can find you a better picture. Those site features, let me see if I can find you a better picture. Cause I, I think we could add those in, Mark. I don't think I have them. There were some benches and Patrick, you might be able to hop in, but I thought we had some, and these might be older pictures.
It, it doesn't look like there's enough room for a, a ADA walkway and a bunch of other benches.
What we, what we did was when we went to the plan to have the option for the trellis in that position, we put a wide enough planting bed in there that we could let, have adequate growing medium for that. We could do a seat wall along there or some feature, but the benches that are shown in that small plan were replaced by planting beds.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mayor, this, this is Linda Morse. I have several questions if this is a break in the discussion. I'm wondering about the alley roof. And what, so it, the price is $142,000, nine hundred, so that's 143,000. And I'm wondering, uh, what the breakdown, what is it? So that looks like, um, I can't tell whether it's plastic and clear for the roof or what these lavender, uh, are they supports that brace the build, the two buildings and, and help support them or could someone describe that for me?
You bet. Kelly is, I believe, on the Zoom. Kelly, are you, are you hearing our conversation? There you go.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Good evening. This is Kelly Thompson at the Ochsner-Hernher, the Olson Studio. So to answer that question, the, um, the, the, the pieces that make up the roof structure are a, um, a polycarbonate, uh, so stronger than just standard plex. And then there's the, the arms or aluminum arms, uh, that stretch out across. And, and as Jason mentioned earlier, they don't touch rally house. So everything is cantilevered off of the garage with a, a system that's, that's attached to the garage and then cantilevered out. The fins are aluminum pins. And again, they are all cantilevered off of the garage. So none of it is touching the rally house and they're multicolored. Just to add some, um, some wow factor as you walk through the, the alley.
And what is it that is, is, is it the, uh, what is it that the high cost?
I, I, I'll defer a little bit to McCown Gordon there. But I think as Jason mentioned, we did not have the actual roof on it when we came to see you last in May. So that's added some cost. But I think the structure itself is, is because it's all cantilevered, it's, is a not cheap structure. And I'll defer to Ben and Barry to further that.
Okay. I wondered, uh, how if you ha, uh, whether the materials that are being used on the walls of the alley, uh, are vandal resistant. So if somebody comes along with a spray can or if somebody tries to scar it up, it's not just going to deteriorate over time. It's a resilient finish.
The, I, I don't know if I have a good answer for you there. They're perf metal panels. They will be able to be cleaned. I, I have, I don't know if you can get an anti-graffiti coating put on them so that it helps with any graffiti cleanup. But we can certainly check into that.
I just think that alleys are ugly for a reason and it takes a lot of effort to make them attractive and keep them attractive. So Mark, Mark Baychamp, are you there? Still?
Yes, I am.
Hi. When we were in Omaha with the Chamber trip, we, we saw their alley with twinkling lights and we were all mesmerized by it, but there's nothing like that in this alley supposed. Is that possible?
I'll let Kelly talk about the, those panels that you see in purple, the kind of purple color, those have LED lights on those to change color on that roof.
I see.
And then also behind the perf panel, the perforated panel on the wall of the garage, it also has LED lights behind that. So I'll let, I, I'll let Kelly explain that a little better than what I could.
Okay.
Yeah. So the design intent on that is there is color changing LEDs in between the panels that flash up to illuminate the, the, the polycarbonate panels are, um, what we call milk plex. It's not plex, but it's shaded white so that the color will bounce off of that and then bounce back down. And again, the color changing, we can program it to do different things. So we have all kinds of different programs that can be run depending on, you know, the, if it's a game day or if it's the holidays or whatever. But there will be lights in there and, and the same goes for the, um, the LEDs that are in the base of the perf panels that will shine up. So we have both of those lighting options in there.
Okay. I wanted to ask about the intersection of 14th and Anderson. And I, you know, I, I use that intersection the entire time I've lived here and I think it does rate some improvements. As you turn south on 14th, um, there's an entrance immediately right into the gas. There are two entrances into the, uh, gas station quick shop property. And then there's the entrance south of that that goes into Burger King. And it's not on your map, but I can tell. But I was, I'm, I'm wondering if, it seems to me that the, the biggest hang up is the, are the people that make an immediate left into the gas station. Is that, that's, you, you can't remedy that at all?
Well, right now that's their, that's their only entrance to get their semi in, in order to drop off fuel for their fuel tanks is to come in through there. So that's the reason why that one was not eliminated with this project.
I'm thinking there's a way to let a semi in and not all traffic. Anyway, um, it, it just is a, a real, um, really does impede traffic there. So that's all I, all I'll tell you. You know it. I wondered, I'm concerned a little bit about the price of the trellis at $57,000. I, is that the price that we paid for the trellises on the downtown parking garage? This one's only two stories. Those are like four.
Yeah. I would, I would venture, this is Jason Hilders, Commissioner Morse. I would venture to say this trellis is a lot cheaper than the one we did downtown. We did multiple panels downtown and you're right, they go from the ground all the way to the top.
Well, but yeah. All the windows, cover all the windows anyway. I mean, I like the effect, uh, I like the effect of the natural growth rather than fleshy metal or, you know, other things. It gives a downtown area an actual, you know, sense of, uh, the nature, minimal that it is. And then alternate number two is the kinetic panels. And I think they're nice. I think that the, with, they're just minimal. I think what we looked at was a broader application, like the entire east side or something in the early concepts that we talked about.
That's correct.
I, I would like for the city to work with some design classes on campus to see if there's something that could be developed that is, uh, more economical. And so I, I, uh, so I, I, I think I'll go along with the, the trellis, but I'm not going to support the kinetic panel. So, uh, let's see. I think those are my questions right now. I may have more. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morse. Are there other commissioner questions or comments?
Um, Hattasol got one more. So is that kind of crown molding? Is that one of the new things that was, that's the outside lines to, to make it break up? That's not the right word for it, but if it was a house, I would call it that, but...
Commissioner Hattasol, this is Patrick Shaw. That, that cornice piece, as we call it, right above that second floor, that's been in since the beginning.
It has been.
It's a little bit, got a little bit more detail shown here, but we always had a cornice piece in there. We feel it's important because it kind of carries that two-story level of Aggieville.
I like it really well and that's why I, it's, it stood out this time. Maybe it didn't because it wasn't...
Shadow on it.
Yeah. I, I like that a lot and I, I don't suppose you can do anything to keep birds from sitting on there, but, uh...
Well, we've done our best with the design of it to kind of try to limit that as much as we can.
Good. So I like that part. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm not in favor of either the alternative simply because it runs up the budget. I mean, just because the sales tax passed doesn't mean we need to spend all the money right now. So I think, you know, we got to get all the frills and excess stuff out of this. You know, that's why I didn't like, I mean, those panels are beautiful, but they're expensive. And then I think, you know, putting the lines in the concrete, fine, that makes it look less like the Berlin Wall. Like that, which is a reasonable, reasonable way to approach it. But, but we gotta, we gotta remember, we don't have unlimited funds here and, and that, uh, sales tax pass, that's good, but gotta be very frugal with it. So that's why I think we can forego alternative one and two. And it's going to look just fine with the flags and without, uh, that, that fancy piece of metal up there on top.
This is Commissioner Esther Brooke. I tend to agree with Commissioner Butler on the, the frills. I, but maybe not for the same reasons. But regardless, I, I'm, what's before us in the, kind of the, it looks to be the motion and the general package, uh, I think we, I support moving forward. Not a fan of, I actually went downtown and looked at the, the greenage there when I saw this picture and I remember how nice it looks in the spring. Unfortunately now it's not so pretty. And so, I mean, you get, uh, the seasonal problems with that. I'm, I'm not a fan. I have a question maybe for Patrick or, uh, anyone else online. The, the alleyway, the walk, um, Commissioner Butler brought up the birds and, or, or maybe Hattasol brought up the birds. What, what about, now the LEDs won't be on all the time. What, what's preventing the animals, uh, for, you know, nesting up there or, or whatever during the evenings or when the lights aren't on?
Commissioner Esther Brooke, this is Ben Flowers with McCown Gordon. We have a bird control system that will be installed on the different surfaces throughout the garage where birds have the propensity to nest and, and build homes. So, uh, whether, there's different methods, but, um, those will be in place to try to prohibit birds from nesting there.
Okay. I just...
I'll add because we have put a lot of time, effort and energy into the downtown garage. Former Mayor Everett is calling quite often. If the pigeon population returns, we go down. There, there are certain techniques that we've implemented to, to curb it. Can you ever say you totally eliminate it? You know, that's, that's always the struggle, but, um, you can move them around and you can make it a little bit uncomfortable for them to be in certain areas. So I think that's, that's essentially what we're going to implement here. This is, this is new. This is going to take some time. We're going to need, you know, obviously a, a, a maintenance plan here and, and an approach that even Ron and I had a pretty detailed discussion about looking at this in greater detail from a design standpoint before we build it to make sure our maintenance and the materials and it can support an individual. Cause I mentioned it'll catch things that people throw. Well, people are going to throw stuff. We gotta be able to get out on this thing and clean it off and make it look nice for, for everyday use. So there's, there's a, there's a little bit more to go here on design, but I do think we can get to a product that we're all proud of and we can, we can manage.
The, the, what, Jason, while you got, uh, chance, um, Commissioner Esther Brooke, the, the, the concrete at the top, now if it were to remain, uh, open, visible, there, there is some mixture in there. It will have a different shade or maybe not, uh, what people would think of as just bleak concrete. There's some, can you speak to that?
There's some lines and some color to it and Patrick might be able to expand here. Uh, this is the effort and energy that was put back into it. So it's not just blank concrete, uh, piers that are brought in on a, on a tilt up basis. So he can expand on that.
Yeah. What, what we planned here, originally the original cost for taking it down, the whole $373,000 would have gotten you gray concrete as it was cast in the form, strip the form off and put it up there. It would have been the color of sidewalks typically, that, that concrete color. What we've got priced here is adding a color add mixture to the concrete. So it's something more in line with limestone color, which is what the downtown garage is. And it's got just a very simple, uh, relief in those vertical pilasters and on what we call the spandrels, the wide pieces that are horizontal. There's a line at the top and a line at the bottom. And then on the top spandrel, there's a little bit of, uh, relief pattern in it. It's very shallow. It's about an inch thick at, at the most, kind of varies in there. It'll be subtle, but it'll just give it some shade and some shadow. So we don't have large blank panels up there. And it's just a, was a means to try to introduce some scale that's friendlier to the texture of, of Aggieville.
So this is Mayor Eddy. I have a couple of questions. I think several of them have been addressed by, uh, the other commissioners. But, uh, Jason, you addressed the maintenance one and that is one of my key concerns. I think initially when we have all of this up and going, it looks nice, but then the maintenance falls on our city staff and how to handle all of that. So that's a different, uh, item. But I was looking at the resolution and I'm kind of confused between the two resolutions. So I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, but the, the resolution number 100, 120, 120 dash A has a preliminary estimate cost of 15 million, uh, 15.4 million, some odd dollars. And, um, so that's for design, construction and contingency costs. Is that different than what the guaranteed, um, pricing project we're looking at right now?
Yes, mayor. So the, the resolutions are a mechanism for the city to authorize the project and authorize the city commission to issue temporary notes. So yes, the GMP is the contract that we'll enter into with McCown Gordon to actually construct the project. So it, it is less. That authorization resolution is going to encompass all costs associated with the garage, including design, right away acquisition easements and construction.
So the numbers are different, but, um, shouldn't what we are agreeing to tonight, whatever that cost might be, be, be in this resolution?
It, it's encompassed in the 15.5.
Okay.
So it's part of that. And we've already authorized and, and paid generally another $2 million for all those other pieces and parts of the garage. But we need authorization to issue temporary financing in the future for all of it.
Okay. The other one is the other resolution number 101, 0120 dash B. In the last part of it for section, um, one, project authorization, there's two different numbers and I'm a little confused. One is for 12th Street and Blumenton Avenue and that says 2.3 million dollars. And the other one is for Laramie and that estimated cost is 2.6 million dollars. But I, I don't know where it falls on, on, on the charts you showed us today. I feel like we're agreeing to $5 million more dollars. I don't know.
Yeah. It, it's a great question because this is very unusual. But when we adopted the original bond authorization back in May of 19, we... we addressed both 12th Street and Laramie at the same time. By amending this resolution, we have to keep the old reference to 12th Street in the resolution and add the increased number for Laramie. So you're, you're spot on. You're not, you're not, you know, issuing another 2.3 million for 12th Street. We've already done that. But the amended resolution needed to identify both those projects because it was in the original. Does that make sense?
I think so. So with the 15 and the five that I see here, is it actually 19 million as opposed to 16 or 17 million?
No, and, and let me bring up that previous PowerPoint, because I think that slide in that PowerPoint does a, a little bit better job of, uh, highlighting the total budgets. Let me share that with you. And this is where we get into how we've approached this project and where it ends up. There we go. Can you see the project budget now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so that tan line through the middle, GMP amount, that's, those are the contracts amount tonight. But when you get down to the bottom and you look at that 17.9 million, or if you go up two lines, 17.7, 79, that's essentially the total project cost for the garage and the street. So that value is going to be very close to those two bond resolutions when you add up the, the garage and the Laramie Street authorization for financing. That includes all costs, and the finance department won't let me pass a resolution unless it's for all costs. So it includes not only construction, design, previous amendments to do site work, right-of-way acquisition and fees, but it also includes the cost of issuance for the notes and the temporary financing, uh, with our bond counsel and financial advisors.
Okay, this is, uh, thanks, Jason. This is Mayor Eddy. Um, so if it says 17.7 million dollars for the total, if we, um, for right now, take that alternate one and number two, if it's 17.7 million dollars, what I'm adding up with the two resolutions is 19 million dollars.
It, it's actually a little lower than that. It's just the Laramie Street improvements at 2.6 and the 15.5 on the parking garage. So it's just over 18 million dollars. And that includes the project financing that you won't see on this chart. That's the calculations done by finance to pay bond counsel and our financial advisors to issue those temporary notes.
Okay, that's, that's the missing piece, the, the project financing piece.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, wow. Probably it would be good to add that on to the list next time, so we get a comprehensive picture. I think, um, you know, we are talking about, what, $57,000 and $142,000, and in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't seem like a lot, because we're talking millions for the other pieces of it. But at the same time, it ends up being a lot when I consider, um, the maintenance, uh, in the long term and, and staff time and all of that it might require. And I don't know what kind of maintenance panels need or any of those LED lights and, um, the structure. If one of them falls, like, I, I, I don't know, uh, all of the, the impact of those, those two pieces we are talking about. But tho- those are my questions for now. Um, if there's public out there, I would like to take public comment on this.
Mayor, I have, Mayor Lindemore, I have another question. First of all, I forgot to mention that I do like the first and second floor, um, with the brick that blends in with the character of Aggieville. And I, on the Blumott Hotel and even the parking garage, you know, there's minimal brick. I'd like to see more brick, and there's more brick on the parking garage than there is on the Blumott. So I hope that in the future, as you approve new, um, buildings for Aggieville, that that brick theme remain, much as the limestone theme in downtown prevails. I think it's, uh, meaningful. It gives that, those, uh, areas of town real definition. But I would, uh, following up on Yusha's, uh, question about the dollars, I'm on both of these resolutions. In paragraph number two, uh, toward the end, it says, uh, "The cost estimate, with such costs to be paid in whole or in part from funds authorized pursuant to the TIF Act and/or from the issuance of the, of the city's general obligation bonds." Nowhere do I see the sales tax, uh, infrastructure piece that you were talking about in the PowerPoint. It's the second paragraph at the end, the last sentence.
Yep, and when we talked to bond counsel about the .5 passing, and its general use referenced in the question, it was not necessary to highlight it as a source for these bonds. So from a technical and legal perspective, you have all the authority as a governing body via the question to assist in the funding of this public infrastructure.
Okay, so.
Most, most of the bonds, this is Ron Fear, the, most of the bonds we issue are all, for general obligation bonds, are repaid from a number of different sources. And the commission has the flexibility to fund those geo-bonds and the bond and interest fund from any variety of, of source that is, is legally eligible for them to do so. So we have all sorts of utility funds, uh, hiccupivo funds, sales tax funds, property tax funds, all of that in the bond and interest fund where ultimately the geo-bonds go.
I just want to be sure that it, it's not totally bonded and we end up putting anything, I don't want, this is not supposed to go on property taxes as far as I'm concerned. So I want to be sure that we, uh, stay in that direction. Uh, okay, thank you.
So now I will, uh, open it up for public comments. I don't believe there were any, uh, written comments, uh, sent to us. Oh, there were, there were a couple, uh, let me see here. There was one public comment received. Actually, two other emails came my way as well. And, um, for in-person, those waiting to speak or make public comments, please come on up, state your name and address for those listening and watching this evening. Ron, is there anybody out there to make public comments?
Uh, no one's approaching the mic to make comments, Mayor. There are, there are no.
There are none, okay.
There are none, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll close public comments. Are there any other questions for Jason or McGowan Gordon or, um, about this project? I, I do want to say, I think, I think what Commissioner Morris was saying about the sales tax is, is important. You know, last year when we were talking about the sales tax initiative, we had projects on there. And this time, we decided not to do that piece of it. But we also know that as future commissioners come and go, and there is a, a long-term, um, bond and interest and geo-bonding and all of this going on with this, for a dedicated source. And I don't know if this is the time to speak to something. If it's not written somewhere, uh, it, it often does not get done or changes in between. So I don't know if this is the time to have any type of discussion towards dedicating something towards this project, because it is a long-term project and the, the TIF district will be there. But as we know, um, you know, we didn't expect a pandemic to happen, and so we don't know what's going to happen in the future, and I don't know if this is the time to dedicate anything. We won't collect that money till 2023 anyway. But are there any recommendations from, um, Ron or other finance or city staff regarding, um, putting something in place?
But, but we've already dedicated it, because we said 70% of the tax goes to debt reduction. Debt is caused by bonds, so it's already covered, and we don't need to dedicate anything. The problem is, we don't need to spend too much. You know, that, that's my point on the alternatives. You know, we've got a sum of money coming in to help us with whatever we decide to bond whoever's here over the next 10 years. That's all perfectly legal, as Jason explained. But there's no sense saying we're gonna dedicate X amount from now right now. It's already dedicated, 70% to debt reduction. So we just drive on from there and keep a lid on spending. That's, that's the real trick. Let's not spend more than we've got coming in.
I, I agree with you, but I was just saying, because there are so many projects that unless there's a dedicated funding source, sometimes things don't happen the way we envision them. Um, and none of us will be here. I'm pretty sure all five of us will not be on board, um, at that time. But if, if that is the discussion for another time, or however you want to handle it, but I, I do understand what Commissioner Morris was saying as far as that sales tax component to this.
I wasn't thinking of the debt reduction money, the 30%, I was thinking of the 20% that's committed to infrastructure, that is as yet undesigned. So that's where I was, uh, coming from. Thank you.
There's no 20% on infrastructure. There's 70% to debt reduction in infrastructure. 20% goes to the chamber, and the rest goes to the, uh, affordable housing initiative.
I think it goes, you can, um.
I do think.
None of it goes to infrastructure then. Is that what you're saying?
No, 70% in the question references both debt and public infrastructure. So that, that 4.5 million is, is a combination of those two. You bring up a good topic. We need to have discussion just about that revenue stream, that 10-year period. Philosophically, every commission from now until 2032 is gonna talk about that and how they want to approach utilizing those funds. Typically, in that budget year, we get into projects that are coming online, debt that is coming on. How do we approach that? We could sit here and talk about a lot of historical things that have happened, and the way we finance them today may not necessarily be the way we talked about it originally. Every governing body looks at that and provides direction on how they want to do that. We can have a philosophy today, but you, you're right. That revenue won't start coming in until 2023. This debt won't be contemplated by a governing body until 2024. But it's good to have those larger macro realizations that TIF money is going to be there. Sales tax money is going to be there, and that is the intent moving forward. And we'll carry that intent as staff as we approach these things moving forward.
On that, Hattasall here, on that same vein, it's been 10 years pretty much since most of the downtown redevelopment was completed. Um, we had a fiscal plan at the time, pile of money here, pile of money here, pile of money here, pile of money here, pay for this baby. Has that generally worked out the way we envisioned it?
It has, and it's quite interesting, because today we got an update. The star bonds, uh, we made a payment. We have about $6 million left to pay on star bonds. Um, we are going to get very close at the end of next year in retiring those completely. More than likely, it'll bleed into '22 a little bit. TIF bonds, we just had another surplus of almost $900,000. So we get about $225,000 into our TIF B fund. That has outperformed Commissioner Hattasall based on what we thought we were gonna receive on TIF A bonds. TIF As are, are still on track. Clearly, when you're generating 900,000 more than TIF As anticipated, that structure is holding on course.
Part of, I know Bernie Hayen, the old finance guy, he was always extra super conservative with stuff. So when they, when we think, uh, the, uh, TIF bonds on the hotel down in Aggieville are gonna generate 17 to 19, that's still on the conservative end of wild-eyed estimates that other people might throw out there.
Yeah, and we hired Dave Darcy from Orlando. Uh, he helped us on our star bonds. He helped, uh, the Unified Gov on their racetrack in Star Bonds for, uh, Village West. So he, he's, he's an expert in this industry. He came in, looked at Aggieville, gave us the projections. Uh, we feel pretty comfortable with them. I personally, um, am probably more of an optimist when it comes to Aggieville, because I think there's a lot of outside interest and inside interest in this area of our community. I think we could actually go well beyond those, those conservative projections. I, and I don't, I'm not gonna throw it into the conversation today. I think we should stay conservative, but if we do start seeing things outpace, then, then we can start talking about how to spend potentially more revenue from a TIF perspective.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of make sure people understood that, yeah, most estimates on those things are, are conservative to start with. And so there should, if we think there's gonna be a, a small pile of money, there's a pretty good chance there'd be a small pile of money with a little extra by the time we're done, hopefully. So, okay, thanks.
Yeah, this is, um, Mayor Eddy. Um, I appreciate that historical perspective, Mark. Uh, I think we forget how that was done when you were on the city commission as well, because we don't see how some of these things pan out in the future. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead, and if there are no more comments, I'll, uh, take a motion on this, uh, item.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrook. I move that we authorize the guaranteed maximum price with McCallan Gordon of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $13,814,121 for the construction of the Aggieville parking garage and $2,278,275 for the Laramie Street improvements. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all documents associated with GMP for the projects and approve resolution numbers 120120-a and 120120-b, authorizing the projects for construction and financing.
Commissioner Butler, I second the motion.
I was gonna say, before we take a second, I was, uh, did we make a decision on alternate one and alternate two?
The motion doesn't include those.
Okay.
Right, I, I second the motion.
Uh, this is Mayor Eddy. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasall?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Eddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Hey, our next general agenda item, um, probably will morph into the other one also, is to consider utility rate increases. Rob Ott, our Director of Public Works, as well as Brian Johnson, our city engineer, and Randy DeWitt, our Assistant Director of Public Works, will be presenting on the next few topics. Um, Rob, are you there?
I am. Good evening, Mayor. Uh, I'll start here in just a second. Couple of commissioners want to take a quick break.
Mayor, uh, can you and Commissioner Morris see the PowerPoint okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm gonna step over to the side here. Commissioner Estabrook isn't in the room at the moment. Um, I can wait a few minutes, or would you like me to start?
Uh, no, we can wait till he gets back.
All right, we'll go ahead and begin. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, Rob Ott, Director of Public Works, uh, and you're gonna get three wonderful, uh, presentations tonight. Uh, Brian Johnson, the city engineer, will come up after me and speak to, uh, Stormwater. And, uh, Randy DeWitt, Assistant Director, uh, for Public Works, to talk about the water and wastewater. However, I know, uh, this evening, uh, just like back in July, uh, the levee. However, I know this evening, just like back in July, the levy kind of dominated our discussion. And, you know, obviously we're a little further along in the year from July, so Randy will have some updates on consumption numbers from the Water and Wastewater Fund. But just as I mentioned. Thank you. As in July, we discussed, you know, the costs associated that are kind of driving the water and wastewater and stormwater rates. Some time ago, the city commission gave us direction for funding sources, for the levy project to include the betterments. Those percentages that we were given direction on was 70% from stormwater, 15% from water and 15% from wastewater. Now, very quickly, I don't want to regurgitate 10 years that took feasibility study from the Corps of Engineers. This is the basic scope of the improvements associated with the levy that protects the community. Assets of roughly $1.4 billion worth of property downtown to include our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, a very core of significant sales tax revenue. And that project, there's some dates up there, has been moving along. And we've been working with the Kansas City Corps of Engineers and they are moving forward with the design details necessary to do, take the doc, I'm sorry, to take final bid documents to bid in 2021. Now, Commissioner Haddasall, you had asked, I think, I don't know if it was two weeks ago or a week ago, you had asked some specific questions about, okay, which betterment was funded or this and that. And I tried to do that on this slide for you in green. So, you know, the base project is split in three different components, which is the stormwater, water and wastewater. The surcharge is needed, which is that $1.66 that we're going to talk about for the base project. Betterment one and two does not need to surcharge. Brian will talk about that. That is going to be funded our stormwater, but it's already in the forecast, so that's not a part of the surcharge. Betterment number three, which is the replacement of the riprap, that is part of the surcharge. So that was not in the original forecast. And then you have projects four and five, or betterments four and five, 100% trails. Number six was in the forecast, utility relocate, which is also eligible, you know, as part of our credits that go back towards the base project. So, let's see here. I think I went through all those. So anyways, just try to, you had to ask that question a couple of weeks ago and try to highlight that. On this slide, this is kind of the first option that we're proposing this evening. So if this commission were to approve the surcharge and the 3% and 3% in water and wastewater, that would start January 1st, collection of revenues of approximately $812,000 per year. So if you start the new rates, January 1st, you're going to have a payment to the Corps of Engineers roughly 60 to 90 days prior to bidding. And this is an example for the base project. You're going to have three revenue sources. You're going to have water and wastewater, which are split equally, roughly 122,000 per year in collection. And then the stormwater, which is just a little bit under, or just a little bit over 550,000. Those collections after three years will add up to roughly 2.44 million. And then obviously when it comes time to bond the project in 2014, you're going to have about 202,000 in temp note and interest. This is no different than when you go to construct a new home from scratch. You have construction loan and that's what temporary notes are. It's, it's our, it's just like the bank if you're building a brand new house. So now it's time to bond the project. You have your base project plus your temp notes, interest and fees. Comes to roughly 11.5 million. You take your collection or a down payment, just as if you were purchasing a car. You make your down payment, drops that overall and you have 9.6 million, I'm sorry, 9.06 million that would need to be financed. When you go, just as if you were doing a car or home, these are kind of the typical charts that you see and where you pay more interest in the beginning and then over time you pay more principal. And again, this, this slide happens to be the principal, driving it down, total principal paid, interest paid, total net paid over. And this is over a 20-year bond financing scheme.
Pause there for a second. Commissioner Haddasall here. The, so the 812,000 per year, 2.44 million after three years, is that strictly come from the surcharge?
Yes.
Okay, all, the, most of the other money in those funds is spoken for in other projects. This is strictly from the surcharge?
That's excellent question and yes, you're correct. The surcharge collected plus the water and wastewater 3% would be collected and then go towards the other projects that I listed. There won't be a collection for some of those betterments. Those are not in the forecast until 2024 in terms of making payments.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on those slides? Okay, I'll keep going. I think you all understood that. Option two, if you do not pass tonight, the surcharge or the 3% on top of our normal increase operating for water and wastewater, we still would recommend the flattening on the stormwater. And this also gets back to, you know, Commissioner Butler's question, I think a couple of weeks as well, about the 0.5. As already mentioned tonight, collection of that wouldn't start until 2023. If you wait to start the new rates until 2024, when we do go to permanent financing, obviously I just kind of repeated the process in the slides, so I'm not going to read them to you verbatim and insult you. Again, kind of, you know, similar charts, obviously we're financing more. And this is kind of a comparison between those two different options. What I would, what I would look at is the difference in the interest paid. It's almost a million dollars more between the two different options. And again, this is just for the base project. You're also going to have the riprap. If I had to, I could, I could run that scenario as well. Again, you would have some interest difference on that $3 million project. You can kind of see annual difference in what the payment would be just for the base project. All right, now I did change this slide slightly. It used to have the word "not" right in front of factored and that was incorrect. These, these costs for levy project are factored into the rate structure, which is betterments one and two and then also utility relocation contract. We have asked multiple times to make sure that expenditure will count towards credit, towards the 10.5 and we have been told yes every time we ask that question. Let's see here. Rate structure adjustments, basically we're recommending this evening and Randy and Brian will go through a great more detail. You know, the water fund and wastewater as well as the stormwater and some of the other projects that are also listed. We're obviously asking for $1.66 increase per ERU or equivalent residential unit for a 20-year bond and then 3% and 3% on top of our normal operating procedures. So what does this mean to our customers? So this chart here is very similar to some charts you're going to see in Randy's presentation. That was also in his commission memo as well. Basically you have your 2020 combined, current combined bill, which is all three components. The first area here in green is 3% increase in just water and wastewater and then the flattening of stormwater. There is no surcharge and that, that would be the bare minimum we would recommend tonight. And you can kind of see the, oh, I'm sorry, the annual difference for all three of those combined for a user depending on their water usage. If the commission does go to the 6% increase for water, wastewater, the flattening for stormwater as well as the surcharge, this is the difference on the annual between 2021 and 2020.
Okay, timeout again?
Yep.
Haddasall here. You refresh my memory as to what flattening the stormwater?
Sure.
That, I saw something in the memo. Is that where we were trying to even out commercial versus residential?
Yes.
Okay, so flat, what are we flattening? The difference?
What, what, what we want to get to is that for the equivalent residential unit, that you, the homeowner and the commercial property owner, their rate per ERU is equal. Right now residential is higher than the commercial rate and we're slowly trying to catch them up together. It won't be until 2022. 2022 is when, and it was a five-year, you know, we just slowly kept increasing the commercial rate faster than residential so that they would essentially be in 2022 equal to each other.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Brian, did you have something? All right. Commercial properties, a little bit different. Water usage is not always, is not proportional to how much impervious area that business may have. I took out the names. Brian has a slide where he actually has businesses and what their ERUs are. I, I took out the names and kind of hit them. These are actually three different customers. It's similar to Randy's low, medium and average in his commercial, commercial chart. And again, I just tried to show you, the, the struggle is, is that, again, water usage is not proportional to how many ERUs they may have. I can tell you some examples. Restaurants in a small footprint have a high water usage, but they have a small footprint, so they have small ERUs. So that's what this chart is. If there's more specific questions, I can try and answer them. I just tried to cover up the names of the businesses. Because it, they're, we basically pulled their current combined bill, monthly bill is February of 2020. So we actually pulled their bill and then we applied the rate changes, whether it's the 3% or 6% with surcharge or without surcharge. Okay? With that, Commissioners, I think I've said this multiple times. This is what we're recommending to help fund that 70, 15 and 15 for the levy. And I'll stand for questions. Please understand I got Brian coming up next on the stormwater and then Randy on the water and wastewater afterwards. Once those two gentlemen are completed, then I believe we'll entertain, see what kind of motions we get on the table. So, Mayor?
Sure. Thanks, Rob. I appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments for Rob? Otherwise I, I would like to hear from the other utility funds as well, but Rob has the floor right now.
Brian, now would you line up?
Thank you, Rob. Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. So I'm here to talk about the stormwater, get a little bit more background information on how we got to the flattening program and talk about the flattening a little bit, and then just talk about the fund from 2020 and, and the revenues and the financials that we have from 2020. Also, I'll talk a little bit about those programs, the projects that are already in the budget in the out years that don't affect the surcharge. So again, the background, in 2016, we started a cost of services study. That study indicated that the stormwater fund was both inequitable and it was underfunded for the projects that we wanted to accomplish. The inequability was, commercial was paying about 60% of what residential was paying. And I've got a chart here, a couple of slides down to kind of show that a little bit more. So the commission in 2018 then passed that five-year flattening program that Commissioner Haddasall was asking about. And that five-year flattening is to get that 40% subsidy out of commercial and get it to where it's equal with residential. Again, an equivalent unit is used, which is what almost every municipality in Kansas and quite honestly across the nation uses. And the goal of that is that if you have one square foot of concrete driveway, you pay the same amount for that one square foot as a commercial business pays. So prior to that, Walmart, box stores, the bigger you were, the less you paid per square foot. So those big box stores were getting about a 50% subsidy on their, on their rates. So again, the goal of the flattening is to get to 755 per ERU by 2022. And that doesn't include any levy surcharges. That 770, that 755 covers all of the CIP items out to 2030, which is the graph I'll show here in a minute. Want to review the community survey from 2018. Again, percent satisfied, X-axis, percent priority, Y-axis. So the higher up you are and the farther left you are, the more dissatisfied citizens are with that service. For Public Works, this was our different services throughout the city that we provide. The only higher priority than stormwater infrastructure per the survey was main streets. The only two items that we're less satisfied with than stormwater is bike lanes. So stormwater is in that upper left quadrant, which is where we don't want to be. We want to be in the lower right. So back to the flattening program, 2021 would be the fourth year. And again, if you look, here's your commercial at 396, your residential at 534. So again, about a 40% subsidy between the two. And some of the projects we've started and are nearing completion that are being paid through the stormwater fund. The downtown south stormwater project, and this project's nearly complete. I gave you a lot more updates back in June. It was under some pretty serious construction then. Getting close to getting this one completed. This actually was the project, the number one project rated in the downtown east and west master plan. Then other projects that are in the out year CIP in the stormwater is this outfall. This one is one of the betterment projects and it'll be paid for through the stormwater fund in those betterments. Second part of that project is widening, expanding the ditch that goes from McCall Road up to Casement and Hayes. That is in the out years for the stormwater program. We show a bid of 2023. We can't do this project till the levy's done, so the levy is kind of holding this project up a little bit. South Manhattan, South Manhattan outfall, we've just recently signed a design contract with a firm to look at this project. We're going to go through some value analysis, try to get some costs down. We got a preliminary cost estimate that was quite high. And so we are going through a value matrix right now, trying to get some costs down. But this project actually is a big outfall that will go up South Manhattan. The second phase actually goes up 14th Street, up towards Anderson, where we know we all have a lot of flooding issues up there. So the fund balance for 2020. Fund balance without the levy, this is our recommended fund balance in red, projected fund balance in blue. So again, we're positive until we get to the far, far out years. When we put the levy payment in there, this is why we need the surcharge, because we actually not only don't meet our recommended fund balances in 2024, we actually don't have money in the account to pay checks come 2027. So that's what the surcharge is about. And with the surcharge, we go from bouncing checks in 2027 to actually having a fund balance. Now, it doesn't meet projections and every year during the CIP process, we're going to debate those projects and whether they need to move. But at least we have money in the fund and the fund is positive. So back to Rob's comment about the stormwater fees for other cities. This is, the blue is Manhattan at the 642, which is the next year of flattening, plus the $1.66 surcharge, that's this column. The red column is the 642 flattening without a surcharge, without the $1.66. And you can see the differences, again, you know, until you get to the real large, very impervious lots, there's not a huge difference, you know, $25, $30, $25. It's, it's when you get to the big box stores, the Walmarts, the Home Depots, those big box stores that shed a lot of water into channels that quite honestly now probably are not sized for that type of impervious area. But even with the $1.66, you see we're, we're right in the middle, Topeka, Lenexa above us. One thing about this graph too is that all of these cities are also talking about stormwater rates in December, just like we are. They're looking at about a 5 to 10% increase pretty much across the board. So Lawrence is going to be real close to this 1381, so we're going to be right in the middle. You got two above us and you got three below us. So again, we're right in the middle. So again, we're right in the middle of those pure cities, which is a good place to be. So future CIP projects, uh, TCB North Channel, we just talked about that. South Manhattan Interceptor, talked about that. Casement Road's been in the CIP for quite some time. And, uh, we've actually moved that back to 2023 because we actually applied for a grant to help with that project, and unfortunately, we didn't get it. So we've moved it back for, for another year to try to get some other grant funding opportunities. Carney, 14th Street, Middle Carney, all big outfalls that are part of those Casement, Hayes, and those South Manhattan projects. Again, everything you see on this chart is included in this graph. So what are our options if we're stabilizing the fund in the out-years? Recommendation is to implement year four, the proposed five-year flattening. That keeps these items on track. Implement the $1.66 surcharge for the levy project. Of note, again, as Rob just said, that buck 66 is revenue neutral. It's enough money to pay the bond, pay the bill, and that's it. Anticipate 4% to 6% increase in the out-years. That's just a guess. And the 4% to 6%, while that sounds like a big number, you have to remember that that's 4% on 642, about 20 cents. That's what that 4% represents. So while it's a big percentage, it's a very small number because we're dealing with small numbers in the stormwater fund. And then implement, one option, another option, implement a development fee, which we're actually going to come back to the commission and talk about, um, with the downtown east watershed, probably in February or March, with the fee in Lou. That's one option, other cities have used it. Lenexa has quite a high fee per ERU for new buildings. So when you come in to get your new building permit, you write a check to Lenexa for $1,100, goes in their stormwater fund. And that number is not included here. Again, Wichita has two mills dedicated to stormwater. So in addition to the 581 Walmart's paying, they're paying about another $1,011 a month in, in, uh, dedicated property tax that goes right into their stormwater fund. Overland Park has .961 mills, so Walmart's paying $716, but they're also paying $500 in property tax every month that goes directly into a stormwater fund. And then Lenexa again with their surcharge. So with that, I'll stand for questions. Anything that I can answer from the commissioner?
Yeah, thanks, Brian, I appreciate it. Um, if there are no commissioner comments or questions for Brian, we can go on to the next one and do all of them in a sequence. Okay.
Uh, Mayor, I have a-
I do have just one.
I have a question of Brian.
Yes.
Yes.
What is the rate increase for next year?
What is the rate increase for next year?
Yep, for stormwater.
So what we're proposing, let me pull up my, my graph again here.
So if we approve this, this year, and it's 6%, that's the total it would be, right? And then next year, we fall back to the fifth year, which is, is that the 3% or is that just water wastewater?
No, that, that 6% in the out-years would be after the flattening. This is year four of the flattening. Next year, our, our recommendation is to get to that 755 for that fifth year of flattening.
Uh-huh.
And then this is the history throughout the last four or five years.
Yeah, but I just wondered, so next year, there would be only a 3% increase for stormwater?
Well, it'd be more than 3%, it'd be 692 to 755.
Yeah.
It'd be 55.63 cents is what we'd be asking for. Whatever percentage that would be. Again, you have two different funds that you're, you're assessing. So this one's going to have a higher percentage because you've gone from 642 to 755.
I know. I'm just, okay, whatever.
Is it, are you adding, uh, 166? That's not where you're adding the surcharge? Is that the sur- surcharge?
This is just the flattening, the surcharge is, is in this graph.
Okay.
Where this is, this is what we're proposing for the flattening. No surcharge.
No surcharge.
This is what we're proposing, flattening plus surcharge.
Okay, got it.
This one would be in the out-years, out to 2030. So then how do we affect this graph in the out-years?
And that's with this particular fund, and then-
Correct.
The next one is the stormwater, right?
Correct.
Just do stormwater, okay. And do we want Randy to go ahead and present? And then we can talk about all of the increases.
I want to ask a further question about this surcharge because, you know, the motion, you know, has us raising these rates to $8.08 and $8.58.
Correct.
Which doesn't match this chart and the flattening thing. Cause if we raise it, then 2022 is not going to be $7.55.
It'd be 755 for the flattening plus the $1.66. That's correct.
Alright, so in how long is this surcharge proposed to continue?
Just the $1.66 surcharge would stay $1.66 until the bond for the levies paid off. So that buck 66 wouldn't change. That would be the revenue generated in order to pay the bond on the levy.
Okay, that, that makes sense then.
Does it, okay. Any other questions I can answer?
I maybe have one for Ron, because I'm not sure this fits in there. I'd, I'd mentioned this the other day, cause I know that the surcharge is all based on funding for the levy.
Correct.
And, you know, without it, then they're going to, we're going to pay more interest, and, and I understand that fully. But, and everybody's thinking about the new tax, but we still have money left in the old taxes. Has anybody investigated that? I think there's $3 million in that EcoDevo tax. Is, is any of that assessable?
So part of that, um, analysis, if you recall, that one of the things we talked about, that the advantages of passing the, the half-cent sales tax was that the current funds that were pledged for future debt service are now relieved, and we can focus on, uh, implementing them for recovery efforts or any initiatives we want to implement that were part of that sooner. So as Jason indicated, we need to have a, a broader discussion about, you know, what are some future projects for the .5? I think some of the existing revenues, uh, that exist in the EcoDevo counts could mix in with that. And it's, it's relevant time to talk about it. You know, Rob showed you the advantages of, you know, starting January 1 of '21 with, with the surcharges in all the funds to start collecting that cash to write down how much we're going to bond or waiting. Well, we can do anywhere in between there too, as options, as well as, you know, instead of going to dock at 66, if you wanted to go 55 cents, you can then up to $1.10, then $1.66. Over three years, you're just, you're just realizing you're not going to be able to pay as much down, and you're going to be in between about half of that, if you do something like that. So those are some options that you have. Uh, you know, part of this was just, you know, what's, what's the impact of COVID on our businesses and our residents? And whether you want to hit them with some of that or phase it in over time.
Well, I think it should be invested. My, my problem is, I, I just don't like the surcharge idea. And, and, and I understand it, it's a way to fund it. But, but the reason I don't like it, 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 to me, it's, it's just a tax. But we're not calling it a tax, we're calling it a surcharge. It's like raising property tax. And we're, we're burying it in the water fund, and, and then I go back and think about all the exemptions we make for hookup fees. And I see and hear you saying, oh, I want to raise the hookup fees for ERUs and all that. And the commission repeatedly, you know, does things like take water fund money and pays for dues to National League of Cities. That's the one that particularly irritated me, because that had nothing to do with water. And we keep abusing the fund. And I'd rather see us fence the fund and really run it like an enterprise fund and say, this money's not going anywhere except into stormwater and where it needs to go. And that really hasn't happened over the past few years. And I guess that's what, uh, that's what disturbs me about the surcharge idea, though, though it's a well-presented case as to why that will make all the money come out. I understand that. But, but I, I guess I'm looking for something other than that surcharge case. Cause, um, water rates have just been, you know, going up and up and up. And I know the folks managing it are doing a great job. And sometimes your, your, your funds are, I use the term pirated by other, other people. And you can't, you can't count on them being there. And, and, and that's part of what, uh, I think we should consider before we pass, uh, you know, a surcharge that's going to be a extra $1.66 on all of this for probably the next 10 years.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what that buck 66 is for, is to pay off that bond. If it's a 10-year bond, then it pays off quicker, 20-year more. That's where the $1.66 came from, from the direction we got it from the commission. Back in July, when we talked about this, did we want to do property tax? Did we want to do sales tax? How do we want to pay for it? And that 70% to the stormwater fund is what that $1.66 comes out to. No, no argument with your, your points, so.
I think I mentioned back then I wasn't real happy with the surcharge, but, but, but good job on the presentation.
I would just-
No issues there at all.
This for Ron Fear, I would just add that, you know, part of that discussion of reaching this recommendation for the 70% out of stormwater, it's, it's, we made a correction to the ERUs. We, we went from a system that didn't have ERUs in stormwater and created this ERU to create some parity between residential and commercial. Cause commercial, residential was subsidizing commercial. So what we haven't done in the stormwater fund is done anything for flood, for flood mitigation measures. We've not put any money in the plan for creating revenue to flood, flood mitigation. We've just robbed from it to do flood mitigation. Clearly, the levy is a flood mitigation effort, uh, and, and is protecting a big chunk of the town and a big chunk of the, the major infrastructure. So that was the other component, why we went lesser amounts on, on the water and wastewater, because the, the flood levy, the, well, the water, the wastewater plant is built into the levy. And the other one is, is certainly impacted, uh, by a levy breach. So I think your justification for using those are there. It's just we're, we're continuing to play catch-up on some fees, systems that were never implemented to fund some of the things we funded. And, you know, and I think there, I think there, there are good justification to use those appropriate utilities for that measure. You could also use other funds, you know? You could make an argument that you could increase property taxes because it's the general welfare of the city. You could make sales taxes for specific measures. So it's, it's infrastructure. So, I mean, there are other arguments you could make, but I think at the time, uh, this was the measure that we brought forward that certainly made some sense and, and made an adjustment that was only going to be there for a 20-year period or the duration of the bonds.
And then it goes away.
Correct.
Yep. And as time goes on, that $1.66 is a smaller percentage of the total bill because, you know, inflation will leave that buck 66 away too.
Hattasall here, just to, just to follow up on Commissioner Butler's question about, uh, leftover EcoDevo money. You said $3 million is, is sort of left in the current, what we expect to sort of have available?
So I think all funds, it's about five.
Five, okay, but that is supposed to, has to last us the next two years.
Right.
If any economic development projects come up before we start collecting the half-cent sales tax. So, okay.
Correct. And we have some, we have some prospects that are knocking on the door.
Good, okay, so we can't, while that, you know, that, that might, might be a good idea. We don't want to not have some of the money available in case we do get a good potential employer, okay?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is Mayor Randy. I think our commissioners bring up a good point. I think as far as the EcoDevo funds, that is something we probably should be discussing when we have our, uh, January retreat or at some point have a longer discussion because we still have the North Campus corridor, we have all of these other things that are lingering and figuring out a path for each of the, um, the economic development funds that we have in place. Uh, but as far as tonight's discussion, um, I think we still have one more item to discuss as far as utilities. Um, should we move forward with that? Or do, uh, do any of the other commissioners have questions? And, or do you want to go one at a time?
No, let's keep going.
I'll keep going then, okay. Next one is the, uh, I'm kind of lost track. I think it's, uh, water and wastewater rates? Is that where we're at?
Yes. Randy's at the podium.
Randy.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we're going to jump right in here and start with the wastewater side. Uh, going to have a, you know, quick review of some of the information that we presented in July. Uh, first on the wastewater side, talking about 2019. Uh, I feel it's pretty important to go back and talk about 2019 just because it, it has a ramification on 2020 and where we are today. Uh, so in 2019, in the wastewater, uh, sales and consumption, we were about $550,000 short revenue. Uh, we've talked a lot, uh, in the past couple of years about declining winter quarter averages and, and its impacts on our, on our revenues. Uh, so in 2019, we had a significant, uh, well, 2% uh, decrease in consumption from 2018. Uh, we ended up with a, a year-end fund balance of about $1.9 million. Our budget amount was $1.5 million. So, uh, we actually started 2020 on a good foot. So our fund balance was a little bit higher than we anticipated it was going to be. Uh, part of that was due to some expenditure savings that we were able to accomplish. Uh, so moving on to 2020 on the wastewater side, uh, sales and consumption. Going back to winter quarter average, when we presented in July, we, we'd noted that it was the first year in a long time we had a modest increase in the winter quarter average. So that helped our revenues quite a bit. Uh, we also are, are in the, 2020 was the year we implemented some, uh, corrective rate structure, uh, rate increases to, to help generate about a million dollars of revenue a year. Uh, so glad to say that so far in 2020, we're on track to meet all of our revenue projections. Uh, as far as expenditures, uh, you, again, we're on track to do about $550,000 in budget savings for this year. That was due to the deferral of a annual maintenance project. Uh, so in the grand scheme of things, 2020, uh, projections towards the end of the year. Again, uh, we're looking at, uh, we had a budgeted, uh, end fund balance of $1.15 million. Uh, we're looking at an actual, uh, end fund balance of $1.72 million. So, uh, we're going to be net positive of about $570,000. So, uh, I got a thumbs up for that one, I like that. Uh, looking at our wastewater fund balance chart, uh, you know, it's, this is one that it looks like it's going to improve quite a bit over the next couple of years, whereas this is one that we'd been worried about quite a bit, uh, years prior. Uh, this, uh, this chart shows the, the green being, uh, record, the projected fund balance. Uh, if we were to do a, a standard 3% rate increase, uh, which is projected for out-years on both the water and wastewater fund, uh, the dash line would be if we added that extra 3% for the levy, uh, projects for a total of 6% rate increase. Uh, and both of, both of these scenarios show that we're, we're looking pretty good in the out-years. Uh, looking at 2030, uh, with a 3% increase, we, we'd still be below the recommended level. Uh, 6% increase, we'd be at or above the recommended level, hopefully. And just a summary, it's what Rob had talked about, uh, just for the, just for the wastewater fund, our, our, our regularly scheduled 3% rate increase on top of the 3% levy, uh, is a total of, uh, 6% for 2020, or 2021, sorry. Uh, moving over to the water side, again, starting with the review of 2019. Uh, poor year for us revenue-wise, we were $1.5 million short, primarily just because it was a record rainfall year. Uh, consumptions decreased that year by 15% from the prior year. Uh, the year-end fund balance was budgeted to be $7.85 million. We ended up with an actual fund balance of $7.61. Uh, so it wasn't as bad as it could have been, but again, we started 2020 a little worse off than we thought we would. Uh, 2020, uh, sales and consumption, and when we met in July, we did talk about there was a little bit of an impact by COVID, uh, we feel. Looking at that time, uh, we were about 80,000 units sold, water less than our 10-year average. So we got off, we got the year off to a bad start with, just by, uh, you know, having some impacts from COVID. Uh, then looking at, uh, year-to-date, uh, we're showing this through October because, uh, uh, October, October receipts come in November. So they're really, I guess you could say this is a January through Ne- November consumption. But still, a 10-year running average, which is essentially what we use to- But still, a ten-year running average, which is essentially what we use to, to budget, we're still about two hundred thousand units sold, uh, less than what we budgeted we'd be. So, uh, we can talk, uh, I can answer any question you want on this information. This is what I presented before about kind of a tracking of our, of our monthly consumption. This year is in blue, uh, average is in black, and there's some information on, you know, prior years, really just illustrates how, how behind we are, uh, in 2020 versus average and versus prior years as far as our individual monthly consumption.
Randy, Hadassal here. Go back one slide for a second here. So when, when we say we're going to be about two hundred thousand units below average, does that mean two hundred thousand out of a million, or two million, or twenty million? Is that a five percent drop, a ten percent drop, or thirty percent? About, put that into relation to something.
So obviously, a unit is what we sell the water by, that represents about seven hundred and fifty gallons. Trying to think about, on average, I believe our consumption would be, I don't want to, I don't want to say the wrong number, but...
A unit is seventy-five gallons?
Seven hundred, yeah. A unit is seven hundred fifty gallons.
Seven hundred fifty gallons, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do the math when I get home.
So, well, here, uh, this is the, this is the next chart I was going to show you, and it, it shows the total running consumption. So on an average year, uh, we would, we would do about, uh, two point five billion gallons of sales. So I'd have to do the math there, go back to units. I, I've got it in my head, uh, about ten million units a year is, is probably.
Okay, so it's not a huge decrease of two hundred thousand units, it's two to three percent at maybe...
Like I said, I...
I'll put them out.
Don't call me on that number, because...
That's fine, that's okay, I'll...
I look at these numbers all day and then, and they quickly, quickly put them out of my mind as fast as I can, so. Bottom line is, is you're looking about one point two million dollars shortage of revenue, is what that equates to. The unit rate is, for 2020, is two dollars and forty-seven cents, uh, but you also got to factor in, you know, we have other rates for outside city and our wholesale customers. So, uh, bottom line is we're about, we're projected to be about one point two million dollars short. We've managed to achieve about six hundred thousand dollars in budget savings this year through, uh, deferring some various CIP projects or, uh, looking at some cash projects and combining them into, into temp note financing. So budgeted for the end of this year, we were looking at being about seven million dollars for the fund balance. And, and actuality, uh, we're projecting to be about seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars or less, so that gets a thumb down. Part I want to emphasize is that this is the second straight year where we've had some issues with, uh, revenue shortfalls. So, uh, we're probably going to, you know, every year we take a look at, you know, our strategies to project consumption and whether or not we need to modify that. Bottom line is, you know, wet years, uh, K-State's one of our biggest customers, you know, their consumption's down quite a bit, so that has a big impact on us. But as we start looking at the fund balance, uh, you can see some of the impacts of the past couple of years between, uh, revenue shortfalls and, and, uh, other expenditures, uh, support to the general fund. That number, that, that projected fund balance has been going down quite a bit. Looking at the out-years, uh, this blue line here represents the three percent increase in order to the water fund or the wastewater fund, and that dash line represents the three percent plus the three percent for the, for the levy surcharge. So either, either option here, we're still looking at out-years, we're going to be below recommended levels. But like Brian mentioned, in, in the stormwater fund, you know, we still should have a pretty safe cushion if we, if we do either option. So, uh, overall, we're not, we're not in as good a shape as we were when I was presenting this a couple of years ago. But we're still in pretty decent shape, uh, as long as things don't continue to trend downward with consumption, so. So again, just, uh, summary of what we're proposing with the rate increases. Current forecast includes three percent increase this year and all out-years. And then for 2021, a one-time three percent increase for the levy. So for 2021, a total increase of six percent. So next, we're going to talk about customer impacts again, just like Brian or Rob did. Typically, we'll highlight a couple categories here. Average residential and, uh, business medium are the categories I tend to focus on. So this table shows, uh, monthly, monthly bill and increases for a three percent increase and a six percent increase. I'm looking at, uh, residential average customer, that average monthly bill. If a six percent increase is going to increase it by a dollar seventy a month, or twenty dollars and thirty-six cents a year. On the business side, looking at business medium, which is a, what I would call, you know, a small office business. Business average is probably going to be more like a restaurant-type business or a large office. But looking at business medium, uh, six per, six percent increase is will result in a increase monthly of three dollars and seventy-three cents, uh, annual increase of forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Same thing on the sewer side. I highlighted this just because I wanted to note that that's new information compared to what was in the original memo. I had some errors in that, so I just wanted to noting that. But this information is correct now, and all this information, uh, for the three percent, six percent increase should be correct in your packet. Again, looking at residential, uh, impacts for the average customer, six percent increase, you're looking at a, a difference of two dollars and fifty-two cents a month. On an annual basis, thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents a month, uh, with a six percent increase. Business medium, six percent increase results in a five dollar fifty-seven month, dollar a month increase. Our total is sixty-six point eight seven. And then the next table is just going to be those combined water and sewer bills. So, uh, a lot of same information you've seen from, from Rob. Next thing I want to talk about, which I always show these and I always preface it with, uh, you know, these are good, these are good things to look at and make sure that we're, um, not out of line with our, our peer cities, but we always include this municipal comparison. These are our peer, uh, cities that are first-class cities, plus, I think there's about two or three of the largest second-class cities that I've included in here. So on the sewer side, this represents just the average monthly residential sewer bill, so that's seven units, uh, per month. So as you can see, uh, the three percent and six percent increase options are here. Both cases were kind of in the middle of the pack. Uh, I will note that, you know, these are our 2021 rates. I don't know what other cities are going to do. It's more than likely that they will increase. I know I've looked at Wichita and Lawrence, you know, they have proposed rate increases on the table too. But all these numbers represent 2020 numbers for these other cities. So, uh, I will say that the average of all the other cities is about forty-four dollars, and our six percent proposed increase would put us right about that average. Next, flipping over to the water bill, same thing, average monthly water bill. This is, uh, you know, we're clear at the bottom, almost, um, either option, three percent, six percent option. We're still one of the lowest, lowest, and when you're comparing ourselves to, uh, peer cities, uh, the average of all other cities is about thirty-nine dollars. So, uh, even with a six percent increase, we're still about ten dollars less than what the average residential customer's going to pay in, in our peer cities. Some other, uh, rate items that I want to talk about that we don't traditionally talk about, just because we haven't always done rate increases for these particular items. System development charges, which are our, basically our impact fees or connection fees when you have a new customer. We do traditionally raise these, uh, to match whatever rate increase we're doing. So I just wanted to note that, you know, those charges are going to have a six percent increase. High-strength sewer discharges. Uh, these are, uh, industrial customers such as, uh, K-State's, uh, Vet Research Facilities, VetMed and BRI. They discharge waste that's high-strength, it's, it's much higher strength than the typical residential or commercial customer. So typically, you were, we're measuring their total suspended solids, their pH, their biochemical oxygen demand, and there's a, a rate per pound that they pay every time they discharge high-strength waste. Traditionally, we don't adjust those rates. This is a program that, uh, the cost recovery on this program is, is less than fifty percent. It costs us a lot more to treat high-strength, uh, wa- discharge. So this is, that's the reason we have these, these additional rates and fees. In the future, hopefully in 2021, um, myself and Abdu Dharar, Environmental Compliance Manager, are going to be here talking to you about some other changes in our industrial pretreatment program. And we're going to talk about potentially changing those rates to, to be more, uh, to have more cost recovery. Right now, I say we're about fifty percent cost recovery. We're looking to get closer to seventy-five percent or even a hundred percent, uh, but that's going to be at a later date. For now, uh, we're proposing on moving forward down in the future to adjusting those rates the same as, uh, any rate adjustments that we make, uh, to our other rates. So we're proposing a, a match six percent increase to those. Liquid waste haulers, uh, similar to high-strength waste. We do permit septic haulers like cat cans to come to the wastewater plant and, and discharge their high-strength waste from, um, septic tanks, uh, porta-potties. They have to have a permit to do that. Again, they, they pay a special rate based on the strength of their, their waste and the volume, so those are also going to go up by six percent. The Kansas One Call fees. We are required to participate in Kansas One Call and have a utility locate, uh, or provide utility locates. That Kansas One Call fee shows up on every, every bill for every customer every month. Uh, we typically look at changing these every two to three years, trying to keep that program, uh, even paying for itself. Last time we adjusted it was in about 2017, I think, or 2018, when we increased it then from eighty-five cents to a dollar. We have two full-time locators on staff, uh, one part-time locator. Next year, hopefully, we're going to go to three full-time locators, uh, so we're going to have some, uh, higher expenses. We'd probably need to raise that a little bit higher, uh, but we didn't want to go all the way to, we were looking at a dollar twenty-five in order to be in the, you know, get us out of the red and into the black a little bit. But we would, we didn't want to make that full twenty-five cent jump, so we're just proposing to increase that to a dollar fifteen for 2021. Uh, we're going to assess the program again next year and see if we need to adjust it again. But then again, like I said, those, those fees are purely just trying to, uh, keep that program, uh, co- a hundred percent cost recovery. It covers, uh, labor, uh, materials, uh, equipment, like locator equipment, it doesn't cover vehicles, but, uh, so we just, we typically adjust those every couple of years. And I think that is all I had for you, so take any questions on water and sewer.
Thank you, Randy. There, are there any questions for Randy? Otherwise, I would like, uh, for Rob to come back up.
Yeah, this, this motion on, uh, you know, approving the ordinance on amending, you know, for water and sewer, that, that's a six percent increase then? Okay. That's just not clear when you read this, if it's three or six, so I just wanted to be sure. It's six.
Mayor, I'm back up at the podium.
Thank you. Yes, uh, thanks, Rob, and I appreciate, uh, Randy as well as Brian Johnson, um, speaking to their items this evening. Uh, Rob, would you please put up the, um, levy project fee increase for residential and, um, um, commercial? Because I think that shows the, uh, three utilities, uh, three percent no charge and six percent plus surcharge. Is there also one with six percent increase and no surcharge?
So, let's see here. I think this is, so I'll start with residential. Three percent increase in water, wastewater, flattening for stormwater, no surcharge. Is that the scenario you were looking for, Mayor?
I was also thinking, uh, if there was a six percent increase and no surcharge, because this says plus surcharge.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't, I didn't prepare, um, I guess, a third set, uh, of six percent plus no surcharge.
That's all right. So this, this is the document I wanted to see mainly because, uh, it addresses all of them and gives the picture, uh, in a comprehensive manner for residential as well as the, um, commercial, uh, for Commissioners to, if they have any questions or anything else before, um, I chime in.
I can actually, on residential, Commissioner, or Mayor, I can actually answer your question very simply. So if you wanted that third chart, the simple math is the annual difference, instead of being five dollars, or I'm sorry, fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, because each residential only has one ERU, you simply would, you would lower that by a dollar sixty-six. So this would, for this low water user residential, it'd be fifty-two dollars and, and some odd cents. It's, oh, I, I apologize. I, I'm, I apologize. You're right. Be a dollar sixty-six times twelve. But on the monthly difference, this would be a dollar sixty-six less.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you, I, I, I do appreciate it. And then that's what I was thinking anyway, uh, but I felt like this gives a, a comprehensive picture for what we are discussing tonight.
Residential is easy. Again, commercial is more complex, as I mentioned earlier. Water usage does not always equal the, the amount of ERUs. So it's really a case-by-case, um, discussion. So go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, well, do the, any of the Commissioners have any questions or comments for Rob or any of the other, um, Brian or for Randy?
Um, Hadassal here, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just, I, I think the idea of a fixed amount surcharge for the next twenty years, that, that we can say this is devoted strictly for the, the levy, is a good thing. We can, we can kind of, we can address this thing one time and then be, hopefully be done with it. And if anybody ever asks about how we're financing the levy, it's that buck sixty-six every month for the rest of your life and then half your kid's life or something. And so that's, I like that idea that we're not going to have to come back in two years and go, "Okay, what are we going to do this year to fund the levy expense? We'll be done with it." And, uh, and it shares the cost among everybody, and those on the high land, those in the flood plain. And, uh, it's, I think it's just the fairest way to kind of go about that.
Commissioner Hesterbrook, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Hadassal, other than it won't be for the whole period of my life, hopefully.
Just twenty years.
Just twenty years, but, uh, it, it does, uh, to what Commissioner Butler was talking about earlier, fencing it off, not rating, all of those things are relative. And I think when we discussed this in July, we didn't know the outcome of the, so, obviously didn't know the outcome of the sales tax. We didn't know what does it, this made sense then, it still makes sense, um, but it is worth exploring those economic, if there is a way to provide recovery and relief with what the existing economic, so. That was a good point by Commissioner Butler, I, but I agree, this makes, the easy answer is we're taking care of the levy with this surcharge.
So, uh, this is Mayor Randy. Rob, is it written anywhere in the resolutions or any, in the ordinances that it'll be designated towards the levy? I didn't see that anywhere.
I do, I do not believe the ordinance changes, um, as proposed tonight, have any fencing off of, of those dollars. It's, it's obviously upon us, um, as we're managing the funds, um, and managing, you know, the revenues and expenses, that we need to, you know, I guess us as, as the three engineers, we need to make sure that we isolate and, and, and those dollars are available to go towards that project. But I don't believe the ordinances have any, they're, they're simply rate increases, um, to each of those three funds.
Mayor, this is Ron Fear. I do think we could, for second reading of the ordinances, uh, are we reading these twice? We are, aren't we? Not planning to? Okay. Well, you could add something in your motion as opposed to the ordinance that reflects the intent.
Simply added, sorry, this is Commissioner Hesterbrook, so the motion added language like, uh, the dollar or the surcharge would be dedicated towards the levy project, simply would take care of that and fence it off.
Is, is that right, Ron? Ron, can we do that? I think mainly because when I look at the increases, I mean, we've been talking about, uh, these particular funds for a few years, and I know how, um, how well we were doing as a city without having to do any increases for a long, long period of time. And then we were putting in force, um, incremental increases. Uh, and I think we were going in the right direction, uh, and I still believe we are. I think the efficiencies with, we see with the water usage and the way, um, whether it's with, you know, toilets flushing themselves and then stopping, or whether it's with water faucets where you just wash your hands and then they shut off themselves, or now with so many students or so many buildings not being in use, where we would have collected some of that, um, revenue. And even for lawns, uh, I don't know how many people are watering their lawn anymore or, you know, those years when we have a lot of rain, people don't tend to, and if it's just mild weather, there's also a reason not to sometimes. So we are dependent on so many issues, but, um, the responsibility for us is the flooding. When we have floods, it comes fast and it impacts all of our, uh, the entire community. And, uh, having, uh, a good water system that works for all of us, so we, there's a, less of a burden, um, I think that's one of the primary functions of, of government. So I'm not opposed to seeing the, uh, 6% increase in, in the water wastewater and, um, stormwater funds. As long, as far as the surcharge, uh, I would be in favor of that as well, as long as it was somehow put in, put in writing somewhere that that's what it will be used for. So that even when we commissioners are no longer on this particular commission, that that's what it's going to be used for.
Yeah, I would think you could add to the stormwater one that, you know, just add, which includes a $1.66 surcharge for levy improvements.
Yeah.
The other ones are the 3% surcharges for levy improvements. The water and wastewater, which could be delineated.
So I was thinking the surcharge was a, a $1.66.
Right.
For each, for each month for...
I have a question. Now that we're, we're digging into the, uh, weeds on this, I guess, uh, the, the intent, as you presented it, was that this would pay, you know, to the, to the dollar essentially for the levy project as we know it, uh, and then would go away. Um, how, what, nothing in our motion, so how do we, how, how is that worded to make it go away?
Oh.
How, how did you foresee that happening?
Well, again, I think that's what you're trying to memorialize, is how in 20 years, uh, do you know that, uh, because I won't be here in 20 years, um, I, I hope to still be here in two to three years. Um, so, you know, I th- I think that's what you're all discussing is how to memorial, and I think that's what Ron's proposing, is, is how to memorialize that, because it's going to be upon staff 20 years from now to, uh, deduct that $1.66, so.
I think Katie's got some suggestions, man.
Go ahead, Katie.
You're, you're not able to bind a future governing body for how they, um, use the funds that are collected through the surcharge? That's not a, an option. You could, i- if you want to express that intent, you could say that it's intended for that purpose, but we don't have a way to bind that those, those funds go to this particular project over a 20-year period through an ordinance.
We, we would just add, including $1.66 surcharge intended to pay for the levy.
Levy improvement costs.
Yeah, i- in that way, it's an expression of your intent without getting into that issue.
And, and the other thing is, Commissioner Estabrook, in 20 years, there's going to be another levy project that we're going to have to pay for. And so that $1.66 will probably roll into, just like every sales tax that was supposed to end after 10 years, it'll get repurposed, uh, for another thing, cause it, there will be maintenance in 20 years, because there is. And so we just, it would be nice to make it go away, um, but I can bet you a hundred dollars that, um, by then, they're going to need that buck 66, $800,000 a year for some other stormwater projects, I would suspect, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, that's, that's a good big-picture comment, Commissioner, because today, if I had 75 million, there's not enough contractors to do all the work, and I don't think everyone could tolerate the amount of streets tore up. There's 75 million in backlog projects in the downtown East watershed only. That doesn't include the rest of the community and all the little backyards that Brian and his staff go to, uh, the backyards of, of some things, Commissioner Estabrook, you've sent me over in Northview that we're, we're trying to find solutions for. You're absolutely right. Big picture, you know, there's, there's, there's challenges throughout the community and not just downtown, uh, with stormwater.
Just note, um, that I often hear Commissioner Butler talk about moving here for the water rates, so in 20 years, that, that's going to be me, right? Uh, how the water rates have gone up and we're continuing to use them, so I'm foreseeing that in my future.
Okay. Yep. I didn't know if you wanted me to pull up a chart again?
No, are there, uh, other discussion, uh, on this item as far as the water rates? 3, 3% increase, 6% increase, surcharge, no surcharge? If there is, then I wouldn't mind a motion. Uh, uh, first of all, I don't, I don't believe I received anything via, for public comment in my email. Uh, Ron, is there anybody there for public comment?
No, Mayor, there's not, and I think it was our intent here that we did. You've got two different motions in front of you, one for stormwater, and then there's one combined for water and wastewater. And if you wanted to add the surcharge language we talked about, intent-wise, that'd be appropriate as well.
Let me see that, okay.
Yep. Well, the, the other one's a 3%.
I'll, I'll do it. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7515, amending section 32 dash 185 of the Code of Ordinances, setting the commercial stormwater rate at $8.08 per month, per equivalent unit, and the residential stormwater rate of eight, at 8.58 per month, effective January 1, 2021, which will, includes a $1.66 per unit dedicated, intended to be used for levy bond repayment. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Haddasal. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, this is Mayor Eddy. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Um, let, uh, under, under comments, I have a question. How can we, uh, keep the, um, these funds, uh, how can the commission? Uh, because it's our discipline. The staff just keeps forwarding, uh, proposals to us that, to pay or use, uh, money from the stormwater fund or the water fund for, uh, not necessarily related purposes. And I do have an interest. If we're going to raise these rates, I want them to be used for the purpose they're intended for. So how can the commission, uh, do a better job of disciplining itself, uh, uh, to assure that, that that's the case?
So this is City Manager Fear. I think there, well, we can talk about a few of those. One thing that comes to mind is just the, the debt service report that shows the transfers that could delineate, uh, specifically for the levy. Uh, normally, we would show it as a total transfer by revenue source, but there might be a way to break down, cause it, this isn't the only thing that, the only debt service that the stormwater fund and the water fund and the wastewater fund is taking care of, but there might be a way in that debt service report to do that. That's one option. There could be other options as well, but...
I think that in January, that's something that we ought to pay attention to as we talk about priorities and how to use economic development money, but it's not just this $1.66, it's those three funds also. Uh, we have, I mean, we have to pay the bills, and it is totally unexpected, and, but it's not just COVID or not just one thing, it's kind of a, um, a back, uh, fill for what, uh, when, when funding gets difficult. And I know we have not allowed the city, uh, for the last couple of years to raise, uh, um, the budget, and so there's a constriction that's coming and desperation to find funds that can be used, uh, for across the way. And that's why we see sometimes three or four funding sources on a project, is because there's no dedicated money. So there has to be, I don't know if we can do everything that we, uh, that we want, or, uh, and we just have to zero in on being more, I just call it disciplined.
So, so that's a good, a good, good lead-in for, I mean, the, the benefit of, uh, you know, none of our preceders, predecessors had these surplus, uh, or these surcharge funds set up for this next phase of development for us to, that was going off. We've talked about different TIF districts when they've gone off and, you know, are we going to use that to lower the property taxes, or we're going to use it for something else? So we didn't have this planned for the conference center. So the conference center was planned to use a set amount of economic development influx, and then we're going to raise property taxes to cover the debt service going forward, and then on the Phase 2, we said we're going to increase the TGT tax to do it. Well, there hasn't been a will of the commission, future commissions, to raise the property tax to cover that, so we've used ED funds to cover that, and now we're going to be short again this year because of COVID on the transient guest tax. So we're going to have that debate, and it's much better having a plan moving forward that a fund is set up for the life of the bonds to be able to cover it than having that exercise every year.
It's just frustrating, which is what we get paid the big bucks for, I think.
The big bucks. That's great. Um, I think it is worth having a discussion when we have our retreat, um, several of these items, especially the economic development funds and such.
I'd like to be sure that these are topics on our agenda for that discussion.
We need to make a, write it down for ourselves, send a note back to, back to Ron and city staff. Um, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Um, if there are no other comments, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Eddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And there's, uh, this is Mayor Eddy. There's another motion to be made?
Um, Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7516 and ordinance number 7517, amending applicable sections of chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances to modify the water and sewer rates and charges as recommended, effective January 1, 2021, which I believe is 3%. Correct?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, if there are no comments, um, Brenda, please call the roll.
Wait, timeout, timeout.
Oh.
So what is, what is the right answer? Is it, is it 3%? 6, it is the 6%. It's, it's what was recommended.
But it reflects the 3%.
Okay, so, it's, okay.
Total, total increase, water and wastewater is 6%. 3% of water and wastewater is for the levy.
Okay, that's what I meant, yep.
There you go. For clarification, thanks, Mark, for asking. Uh, there is a motion, and I think there was a second.
Commissioner Estabrook, second.
Okay. Uh, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Eddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Um, I propose we take a five-minute break. It's about close to 10:30, and we still have, uh, two items, this one and the, um, uh, consent agenda item that's been moved to the general agenda. So let's return in about, is five minutes good enough? All right. Okay. We'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you. If everybody's ready, item D, consumer procurement and purchasing related policies. Dennis Marstall, our assistant city manager, along with Katie Jackson, our city attorney, will be presenting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good to be before you, Dennis Marstall, Assistant City Manager. Got a couple of things to run through with you this evening related to our purchasing documents. And this is built upon the actions that you took in October. Oh, thank you. I'm going to do some screen share here. So back on October 20th, you adopted a charter ordinance number 62, which was our cities, you updated the city's contracting process for public improvements. And as part of that, you raised a threshold for city commission approval of public improvement projects where you went from $20,000 to look at things over $50,000. And as part of that, you also did a third action there about increasing the city manager's authority to approve the public improvement projects with costs not to exceed $50,000. And so as part of the ordinance adoption, there's a nuance in there that says when you do an ordinance adoption, there's an opportunity for a protest period of 61 days. And so we didn't want to bring these resolutions to you that kind of really will impact of what you said in the charter ordinance or really basically make the charter ordinance play out through these resolutions. So we had to give it some time to see if there is any interest in a protest to become before the voters. To this date, we've not seen a protest petition. So we want to still move forward to bring these with you. And what we're doing today is what the charter ordinance changes is that we also have other resolutions related to purchasing, procurement, and even the disposal of assets. So all three of these documents have evolved over the years, different resolutions primarily going back to 2005, when we did a lot of updates to our procurement process. But what this will do today, the action we're asking you to look at tonight, is to address three resolutions, purchasing, procurement, engineering on call, and then our disposal of assets. And so what we're doing basically is updating these three resolutions because they will all have an effective date of January 1, 2020, which is when the charter ordinance goes into effect. All three of them will reflect the change in purchasing authority that you've extended through the charter ordinance. And then again, we will still have our current process in place where the city manager will continue to communicate the approved purchases that he's done under his authority to the city commission. So specifically, these three different resolutions we're looking at, one of them is resolution number 120120-C, which is specifically our procurement and purchasing policy for goods and services. And so again, we update the city manager's purchase authority. But also, we want to make sure that you know that we're not losing some things in these as we're doing these updates, is that it still provides for quality-based selection process, and again, based on fee amount. And even if the fee is within the city manager's authority, that below $50,000, we still have this process available. And then again, with all of our policies, we have an administrative policy that accompanies these resolutions that you adopt as a policy. So that way, we can incorporate the staff directive about how we actually implement these policies that you've set forth. And so this is really the one resolution of procurement and purchasing. The second one is about the engineering on call services. This has been a commission-generated policy for several years now, and so that's definitely continuing. So what we do, we're maintaining our engineering on call program that outlines the process by which firms may be considered to be in the program or even added. There's a process to add firms in our different areas for the engineering on call services. Again, it reflects a new approval authority of the city manager. But one thing that we're doing with this is that it moves the engineering and architectural services with all other professional services. And so we've kind of always looked at these separate, but as we have our updated procurement policies, there's no reason to keep it too separate. The only thing that we're doing separately is having what is a process for the on-call service. So we're going to do the engineering on call. And then as you see, we still have the QBS, the quality-based selection process that's still maintained even for the professional services. And then, as we said, the procurement policy provides for QBS selection based upon the fee amount, again, even if it's within the city manager's authority below $50,000. So we're going to give you that comfort knowing it's still there. This is really just some of our nuanced updates for our different resolutions to correspond with the charter ordinance. And then lastly, what we have done, something a little bit different, is our disposal of obsolete or surplus city property and assets, it was included in our purchasing policy. So when you have purchasing, then you have disposal, the two aren't necessarily connected. And so we've actually separated out the disposal component of our surplus city property from the original location in the procurement policy because it's a separate concept and has some other nuances to it. But we did want to make sure we define the obsolete surplus city property, which is in there. Again, the city manager's authority to approve of the disposal if the current estimated value is not more than $50,000. Again, we will come back to you. If we have a piece of equipment or whatever it may be that we want to dispose of, but the value is still more than $50,000, we'll come back for your approval. And then again, as we said, with all of our resolutions and policies, we have the administrative policy to make sure we have our procedures in place and how we go about doing this, whether it's using the state surplus system, whether we use some local governments that maybe can use a product. So we also will have the administrative policy that will be developed based upon your actions tonight. And so really, it's those three resolutions you have in front of you that was in your packet tonight. It reflects these changes to correspond to the charter ordinance you adopted in October. And I will take any questions, or Katie is here if you have any as well.
Uh, this is Mayor Reddy. Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions or comments for Dennis on this particular item?
Uh, Linda Morse, I have a question. Is it possible that you have a list of the items that have been disposed of, like in 2020?
Yeah, I mean, you think about different vehicles, different, I mean, even our phone system, old used phones that we used to have. But yeah, we have, in the past, we brought these items to you as commissioners when we did the disposal. And so we can go back and kind of put that list together for you. But yes, we do have that information.
Well, I was just thinking, I know that when you remove something from inventory, of course, it has to have a certain value, that you, you have that list. But I just wondered, I've never even thought about or considered. Do you ever use like an auction service, like Purple Wave? Or do you, our, a lot, some governments do, and I just wondered how you decide how to dispose of things?
Absolutely. We've, we use Purple Wave very frequently for a lot of our surplus items. And so that is one of the mechanisms that we outline in one of our administrative policies that that is an acceptable way to dispose of our assets.
Okay. Thank you. I, I might ask for one. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, similar question. I just don't remember, but I don't know what $50,000 of equipment or even $20,000 might look like. I, I just don't remember any of those items that we approved or not approved or even talked about. But my other question to you is the purchasing power or the on-call, the quality-based selection process for consultants and engineers and architects. So right now, it's up to $20,000 and we're limiting, increasing it to $50,000. So this is for, is there still a process? I'm assuming there's still a process for selection.
Yes, absolutely. So depending upon what the service is, for the engineer on call, if you recall, that we just go through the engineering list who's been approved or accepted. And depending upon what the issue may be, it may be a smaller project for that time that they're next in line. But when we go to other services, if the park staff needs something, we can go out for professional services and do basically the quality basis, looking at what is the need? Do we need someone specific to landscape architecture and kind of understand what their backgrounds are for the need at hand, whatever the services that we need at hand? So we do have the ability not to just do low price, but what is a qualify, qualification and maybe even timeframe that the professional services are available?
Yeah. I think that's, that's once, one area I'm a little concerned about because there's a lot of projects that come and $50,000 adds up or even anything between 20 and 50,000. Has there been a sense of urgency where it was held back because it couldn't come to the city commission fast enough?
I wouldn't say held back. There's, there was definitely some delays when you think about some of the engineering projects, when we're trying to do some roadworks or Rob can speak to this more, others. But yeah, when we just need surveying some information, I don't know if survey is the best word, but when we just need a small design of, say, an outflow or a storm sewer or something real quick as part of a project, instead of coming back to the commission for that to keep that project moving forward, the on-call has served us very well. And it has a rotation, again, for fairness among use of those who have applied to be on the engineer on-call list. But also, it really has helped our expediency for really these smaller projects that maybe was a $5,000 engineering project to really keep the larger million-dollar project moving forward.
Yeah, I think $50,000, I think, so I'm thinking when, currently, maybe do they end up on our consent agenda? Is that how we are approving it? But I, because I don't think we usually get a full presentation on a work session or on a legislative item.
Correct, yeah, it just depends on the threshold of price amount. I think usually they'd end up on your consent agenda.
Are there other questions for Dennis or Katie?
Are the architectural services new to this process?
No. They've been, yeah, no, they've been part of that either. The...
I know engineering is, has been part of our on-call process, but I wasn't sure about architectural services.
And I think, again, this has kind of a broad definition that people consider architectural services, it's not pure architects. But I think it's been...
We, we haven't used the on-call program for architectural or vertical construction. And I don't think we're proposing to.
No.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
So is this, this is Mayor Reddy. Is this common practice in other cities as well?
The engineering on-call?
Yes.
Specifically?
For the $50,000 for those on-call services.
I don't know the different threshold amounts, but the engineering on-call is a common municipal process, yes.
How does an, if we have new engineering firms who move to town, how do they get into the rotation?
Actually, we have a process that we say is part of this is about every two years, we come to you to identify the process. We have a RFP that our public work staff will send out and to all firms who are interested in different categories, whether it's water services or wastewater or talk about even what we may consider architectural in some ways. They are able to submit an RFP response to that. And Rob has already outlined that process and we've gone through it two years ago.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's every three years.
Three years, thank you.
It started out as every two and every three years. I think Commissioner Butler and maybe Commissioner Morse sat on, they sat on the previous selection. So to answer your question specifically, Commissioner Morse, well, just like all RFQs, we'll advertise them both in the paper as well as on our city notification system as well as our Drexel system. So if there is a new firm in town, they would have an opportunity. I think our intent is to stay with the four categories, which is transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater. And then continue to have the rotation in those four categories. Some of the smaller stuff that Dennis is talking about, a lot of times, my in-house staff, we may not have enough staff to do surveying. So that's where I need help from a local firm. I don't need to do a big-blown RFP or RFQ because it wastes a lot of time. I need survey from A to B. That way, because my other surveyors are already too busy, and then my design staff can get started on CAD work. Or perhaps there's something specific Dennis mentioned, a retaining wall. Karen Becker, one of our principal lead engineers, sometimes we need, you know, special analysis. That's not her specialty, but we still want to make sure that we build a retaining wall on a project that we're designing in-house. Again, doesn't necessarily fall underneath one of those, you know, other four categories. That's, that's where that $50,000 threshold comes in. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Morse?
Pretty much. I just want to be, you know, I just, I have heard a rumbling or two that some engineering folks were complaining about never being selected. But I don't know, I, I just want to be sure that new firms to town and, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure how to, how to get on that list, but I appreciate you clarifying it. Thank you.
Yeah. Public advertisement, they're, they're allowed to submit for that RFQ. And then just like any selection process, the, the submittals are reviewed, scored, and then decisions are made and go forth.
Okay.
Sorry, Dennis, I just wanted to help you.
Are there other questions for Dennis or Rob or Katie? I don't believe we received any public email comments on this particular agenda item. Ron, is there anyone in public for public comment?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will call for a motion. I will say, I think I, I will probably vote no on one portion of the, of the possible motion. It's the engineer on-call policy. I think $50,000 is a bit high. So for that, I don't know if we can separate it like that when I make my, do my vote. So can I do that? I don't know.
You can separate your vote, and if there's three people that say the same thing, then that will not pass. But, so you can, you can, is that correct?
Okay.
I would think if there's three people that say that, then that, that part of it will fail.
Because it's a, it's one motion. I don't know if I can vote no on just one portion of that motion.
I think it depends on the original motion. So if the original motion is to pass two of them at the $50,000, let's see, that would be the purchase of goods and services. And the disposal, unless you want to limit engineer on-call and disposable, disposal to $20,000, because that's what it has been, right? Isn't that true, Dennis?
Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner, if you'd like, you have a possible motion contained in your agenda packet.
I can't hear.
Oh, it's, it's on. Yes? Okay. Can you hear me, Mayor and Commissioners?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So if you look at the possible motion in your packet, what you could do is you could break, they're, they're separated by semicolons. You could do three separate motions so that you could accomplish what you would like. And they're separated for you, so you could just say approve up to the semicolon, approve. And, or you could combine two if you prefer. But the guidance would be there in that possible motion section.
Okay. Then I would appreciate maybe three possible motions and do them separately. So would a commissioner like to make motion?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Estabrock. I move that we approve resolution number 120120-C pertaining to the procurement and purchasing policy for goods and services.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterbrooke?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution number 120120-D pertaining to the selection of engineering consultants for engineer on-call policy.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterbrooke?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
No. And the last motion?
Motion carries four to one.
Sorry about that.
Mayor, Commissioner Osterbrooke, I move we approve resolution number 120120-E pertaining to disposal of obsolete or surplus city property and assets.
I'll second.
Great, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterbrooke?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, this is Mayor Ready, we moved one of the consent agenda items to the end of the general agenda, that was item number I, seven and eight, I believe, no, yeah, seven and eight, the law board reappointments and the law board appointment, we received an email, a comment on this, and I will let Commissioner Butler address this, since he moved it to the general agenda.
Yeah, I think that, you know, in the future, we should, you know, that, that email had merit to look at how to do the law board, because basically, the, the law board affects our budget, and the members on the law board are not, well, they don't have to answer to us once they're appointed, they can do whatever they want to do, so it makes sense to maybe relook that, because that's probably one of the most important boards we have, now, as I was looking at the people that applied, I think there were 16 different names that were there, which goes along with that email, there's 16 different people, maybe no one's aware of that, and the law board, there, there aren't any requirements for, like, term limits, some of our city boards have term limits included, and this one doesn't, which I think maybe it should, so that we're not just reappointing the same people constantly, so, I don't have a, a problem with the appointment of Patricia Hudgens to the, to the law board, because I think she's done a good job, I think she was on the school board before, very diligent person, will make a good appointment, also, no problem with Commissioner Morris, since none of the rest of us sent in an application to be on the law board, so, you know, by default, we only had one that wanted to serve, but I don't think we should reappoint Bee Stoney to the board, simply because she's been on there a pretty long time, and she also is not always available in the summer for the meetings, and has, has missed a number of those, and I would like to see Caleb James appointed to that position.
Okay, so are there any other comments on the law board discussion?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Osterbrooke, well, I, I don't have any problem with the appointee, the, the, the names, I think this process, as outlined by Dr. Lockett, with the Coalition of Equal Justice, brings to light some good points about the process of how those, you know, 16 applicants are selected, made me kind of look at the application closer, and, you know, we only asked, we asked the same question of our law board members as we do any other advisory board, I think that, while this isn't the time, but to make the changes going forward, I would, I would like to see some of these ideas discussed in the public comments, explored, and to include changes to the document, or at least the questions, of what is, how is determined qualifications for the law board, just some vetting processes that are a little bit deeper, I, again, don't have any problems with the appointed recommendations, I think the process is, should deserve to be on its own, and maybe just a thought to Mayor and future commission, I don't know if there's, so the, the, the point that was being made in these public comments are the at-large section, and that is really where there's a vested interest from the community, the county also has a large appointments, perhaps there's good faith effort amongst us to redevelop the process at a city-county-county discussion of what that questionnaire might look like, or what their process is, I don't know, it's worth talking, we don't have to do what the county wants to do, and we're not obligated by the statute to do anything different than we are, but I think bringing that a large component will engage this process, from my understanding, with the Coalition of Equal Justice questions here.
Sure, thank you, this is Mayor Ready, I have talked to Lorenza Lockett before, and I've had conversations, and just for historical perspective, and some of the commissioners that have been here, such as Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Butler, and Commissioner Haddasol, it used to be where the, even for the at-large, we would have a commissioner at-large and a commissioner, so there was a time where we had two commissioners and one community member, and there was also a time when there was three commissioners, I remember when there was Commissioner Mata, Commissioner Butler, and Commissioner Jankovic on there at one time, and one time it was Commissioner McCullough and Commissioner, myself, and I believe Commissioner Butler, I don't remember, but there was a time when there was, all of it was filled with three commissioners, and, and that was the purpose being that we, we discussed the budget so much, and the Riley County Police Department plays so much into our budget decisions, so there was kind of a relevant factor at that point, but then, through lots of discussions, you know, sometimes there were two commissioners, and now there is one commissioner and two at-large members, speaking to the people that apply, as to any board, we have the interest form, and people apply, so even when you say 16 or 17, not all of them are from this year, they're from even 2019 and some other ones, and this is a volunteer position at the same time, so we, I think these are issues that we can discuss, you know, such was presented in the public comment email to, to us, but it's also a discussion when Commissioner Dodson was here, and we were looking at redoing the entire statute, and we had talked to Representative Phillips, and Senator Hawke, and Representative Carlin Alstott at the same time, and we did have several city-county-county meetings where we wanted to revisit the statute and redo it, primarily because we are the only community that has a Riley County PD, and we don't elect a sheriff, so that's been in discussion for a while, I don't mind discussing this further, if that's the direction this commission wants to go, but we do have a process in place, like we do for other boards, and at the state and federal level, when, when there's appointments made, typically the elected officials take a vote, such as five commissioners tonight would take a vote on the appointments, an interviewing process is typically not done by a public organization, that's why you are elected, to make some of those appointments, but if that is something this commission wants to discuss, we certainly can, but it is a discussion we need to have with the county as well, because this is a city and county board, a law board, and it needs to be together, I, I don't believe it should just be the city alone when it comes to these types of appointments, as far as terms, I think that's a discussion we can have also, but I, I think law board member Craig Beardsley has been there at least three terms, I believe, and some of the other, well, Barry Wilkerson is just standard for as long as he wants to be, I suppose, as long as he's an elected official, but some of the, some of us have rotated on and off of that law board as well, so if we want to discuss term limits, we can, but I will say, when you are on a board like law board, and you have a two-year term, sometimes it just takes a year to understand what's going on, just like if you're on the city commission, sometimes it just takes a year to figure out how everything works, so by the time you understand how the processes and the budgets and all the meetings go, you have that experience, and you want that institutional experience to be there as well when you're making some of those decisions, but if that's a discussion we want to have about how, how many terms we want, not only on law board, but any of our boards, because there are boards where some of those members never show up, and they're just on the board, for name's sake, so we don't want that either, we do appreciate their volunteer and the public service, each of our board members serve on all of our boards, but with that, I would like to take a, a vote on tonight's appointments, and see if we want to move further with a different discussion.
One other comment, you know, you were talking about continuity on the board, and Robert Ward, you know, was, is currently in the seat, he's only been there two years, and I'm not sure why he wasn't considered for reappointment, because he's done some pretty good work on some policy things that I won't, you know, discuss, you know, further, but my main point is, I just want to see Caleb James appointed on the board, so I want to make a motion that we appoint Caleb James to the law board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I don't, I don't think that's appropriate, I think the mayor has nominated three people, and our purpose this evening is to vote on those nominations, I think Caleb could be appointed by the county, maybe the, I mean, there, this is just all of a sudden, when wants Caleb appointed, and I think we need to measure things out and be more determined, I am pleased to have more diversity on the law board, and I'm a champion of that diversity, and I've appreciated Yusha's appointment to the law board, rather than it being all white male, like it had, like it was for years, so I think there's value, a big value in that diversity, I think there have never been three women before on the law board, so we are making progress, and we've never had two African-Americans on the law board either, so I, I think we're, we're making progress slowly, and I'd like to, to proceed and continue in that direction, I value that, and I want it, but not just a pop-up kind of a decision.
It's not a, it's not a pop-up decision, and I mean, and I understand you're making your appointments based on gender, you made that, you made that clear, but, but I do want to ask, is it inappropriate for me to make this motion, I know you don't like it, it was done in the past, last time I was mayor, you know, the, the people didn't like the law board appointments, I think we had a nasty argument about that, something to the effect of too many old white men on the board, as I recall.
I have no idea what happened in the history.
You, you weren't present there, Linda, but I think Commissioner Ready was.
Yeah, I wasn't.
And, and, and so it's perfectly appropriate, I mean, the mayor makes nominations, it's not an automatic appointment, and you need three votes to make it happen, and all I'm saying is, I would like to see Caleb James be a member of the law board, and the primary reason is, he's pretty good, understanding budget, and I think he will add some diversity to the law board.
Well, you made, you made a motion, so somebody needs to second it.
Second, Haddasol.
Okay, Mark Haddasol had seconded, I do want to make a comment, I think there were some things said that do require response, I, I feel the appointments that were made to law board tonight for Bee Stoney, Linda Morris, as well as Pat Hudgens, are very responsible, very dedicated, community members and leaders, and all three of them do understand the budget, and I don't see why they are held to this other standard, when a few of the commissioners, a few of the members on law board were never questioned about any of this, it seems kind of, I don't know what the purpose is, honestly, but I think I'm comfortable with the appointments that have nominated for this evening, Pat Hudgens is, was on the USD 383 Board of Ed, and she was also on the community advisory board, Bee Stoney has been on law board for two terms, and she understands budget, she works with Kansas State University, and she's been involved in several, several policies at Kansas State University, as well as in our community, and Linda, of course, is our city commissioner, so with that said, there was a motion made by Commissioner Butler, and a second by Commissioner Haddasol, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor, with the positions being assigned, we will need to know specifically in the motion, which position this is, that's being, Caleb's being appointed to.
All right, when, do you want to tell us exactly how you want that?
The, the motion is to make, to appoint Caleb James to the Riley County Law Board in the citizen-at-large position currently held by Bida Stoney.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Osterbrooke?
No, and I can offer an explanation, I don't feel comfortable changing the process without it being, in my mind, I would like to see the process changed going forward, so there's more transparency, rather than what we're experiencing tonight, you know, names being offered up to be submitted where, you know, without the correct, in my mind, vetting process, but, one thing that I am, you know, clear on is that Bee Stoney, who has served on the Fair and Impartial Policing Committee, and that's part of her application here, which unfortunately isn't public, but that makes the difference in my mind, that they've made some good gains on that Fair and Impartial Policing Committee, and I'd hate to see her not bring that voice to the law board.
Mayor Ready?
Yes, no, sorry, no to the motion that's on the floor.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Motion fails, three to two.
Brenda, this is Mayor Ready, is there a motion for the current appointments as recommended?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we reappoint Commissioner Morris and Bida Stoney to the Riley County Law Enforcement Board, and appoint Patricia Hudgens to the Riley County Law Enforcement Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Osterbrooke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready, I mean, Mayor Ready?
Yes, it's been a long night.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Brenda, I believe that's the end of our meeting, unless there are any other items, Ron, is that it?
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, thank staff for staying with us, and, sorry, okay, we are adjourned.